This conference will now be recorded.
All right, notice is hereby given that the Lago Vista City Council is holding a regular meeting on Thursday, July 1st, 2021, at 5:35 PM via go-to meeting and in the city council chambers at City Hall 5803 Thunderbird, Lago Vista, Texas, as prescribed by VTC government code section 551.0041 to consider the following agenda items. Sandra, please note, we have all of our council members, all of our council members, because there's Shalane. We start with the executive session. Does anybody have anything? Shalane, unless you have something, we don't have anything for executive session.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I don't even have a link for executive session, so. I just sent it a couple minutes ago.
Oh, it may not, it might be in cyberspace somewhere, but if you all don't have anything, I have one question maybe for Aaron, but I actually, it's, I don't even know if I can ask it in open session, or if it has to be an executive session, so.
Now, do we, well, you want to go to executive session, Ed?
It, it might be safer.
Yeah, all right, we'll just go. All right. One, we will convene into a closed executive session pursuant to section 551.071, Advice of Council, 551.072, Real Property, 551.074, Personnel, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Texas Government Code, and Section 1.05, Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct Regarding A. Consultation with Legal Counsel and Possible Action Concerning Any Regular Meeting Agenda Item Requiring Confidential Attorney/Client Advice Necessitated by the Deliberation or Discussion of Said Item As Needed. And we will convene at 5:37 PM.
This conference will now be recorded.
One, two, three. Six, arch, all right. All right, we reconvene from executive session in the open session at 6:06 PM, and we will recess until 6:30 PM.
This conference will now be recorded.
Now being recorded, all right. All right, we reconvene from recess and executive session into open session to act as deemed appropriate in city councils discretion regarding any necessary action regarding any regular meeting and agenda item. And Aaron, if you would, could you provide the audience with a brief overview of what we discussed in the executive session? Sorry.
The executive session only does, it was only established to allow us to discuss things that are on the regular session, and so there was a short session about the status of the property on 20806 Bonanza.
That was it? We had no agenda items, so. Any, any action regarding any regular meeting and agenda items?
No action.
All right, we were going to the open session at this time then, so we will start with the pledge of allegiance to the US and the Texas flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
On under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. May you see it? All right, we will start with citizen comments. Just a heads up, we are doing a hybrid meeting tonight, so we have members in the audience and online, so bear with us as we try to work through both of these technological issues. Citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. And as I have read the rules of procedure over the last two months, I think I've read them enough, and I am not going to read them, and those of you who have looked at the agenda, item number six pertains to our rules of procedure, so they will be changing anyway. So, I am going to start in the audience, the live audience. I have no one who has signed up to speak, but if there is somebody who would like to address the council regarding an item not on the agenda, please let me know. All right, if you would, please come to the microphone and, or can somebody take him the microphone, please?
Back up there?
He's the one.
No, Brad, you're all set?
That's all right.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that.
And just state your name for the audience, please.
Yeah, my name is Stephen Surryk, C-U-R-Y-K, and I live on Wishbone Drive. Anyway. I noticed we get half-built on things. That road, for instance, is not complete, it's not painted. You know, and we ran into this before, and I raised the question, and I was kind of waved away. Why is it we don't get completion bonds? So if they don't complete in the time they're supposed to, the insurance company is gonna pay, have to pay a fine to the city of Lago Vista. And I don't understand that. If you go to Houston, that's what they have, completion bonds, and I've been directly involved with some of that. And I don't think it's that big a deal for the contractor as far as cost is concerned, but at least you get your job done on time, and we don't have things like the nameless shopping center on a corner that used to be a moonscape, and then they put a shopping center on it. That's number one. Number two, I came down on Cannon, I believe, Bonanza and Cannon, and there's a sign there where you can barely see it, public notice. I'm not sure where the public is that that's supposed to be noticing that, but that is not a very well-traveled road compared to Dawn Drive, for instance. And it's supposed to be a, some kind of a variance on our, what do they call it? Someone give me a hand. Variance on the.
What are you looking for?
Yeah, the.
The.
That may actually be on the agenda tonight, the two-acre parcel.
Anyway. In other words, the law that basically says you can only build this high and that high, and only not put a.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, there we go. And for some reason or other, it's hidden, and I was told when I asked about it, oh, it's supposed to be in front of the property that, that they're gonna get a variance on. And I just think it's, it looked very suspicious. Why isn't it up on Dawn Drive? So people can see it and make comments on it, and not hidden in a corner somewhere? Okay, we need streetlights. We're building more and more houses on Arrowhead, and the number of streetlights are there since there was maybe one or two houses on it. And I know it's expensive, but what are you gonna do? Some of the houses I've seen built, some of them look like warehouses, and some of them are just plain ugly. Why don't we have a standard that describes the kind of house that has to be built that fits into Lago Vista, and not have warehouses being built? I mean, there's one, and I can't remember the street, but if you would like, I can get it and tell you, there's one doesn't have a, even have a window on it. And lastly, there's a giant pothole, which is getting to look more and more like a sinkhole on Canyon Drive, Two item, I believe, and it would be nice if somebody would pay attention to it, because someone's gonna end up with a broken tire or a broken ax. And aside from that, that's my comment so far. Hope you all enjoy seeing me again. I've been gone a long time.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Made all the notes. All right, anybody else in the live audience who would like to address council? All right, I will go to the virtual audience. Is there anybody online who would like to address council at this time? All right, CNN, we will go to. Items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415, the city council may report on any of the following items: expressions of thanks, gratitude and condolences, information regarding holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders regarding city council events, reminders regarding community events, and health and safety announcements. And from Public Information Office, I have Freedom Fest this Saturday, 5K race. I think the mayor's team is still open for participants. If you want to join my team, when you sign up, just put your name down as being a part of the mayor's team. We run real slow. Matter of fact, the wife is walking, so we got all the paces, except for the fast pace covered. Parade is at 10, right here down Dawn Drive. I know they will be closing Dawn Drive to traffic at 9:30, so if you're in the parade or need to get up and down Dawn Drive, I would say get to your positions before 9:30. Party begins at noon. It's nice they listed as a party. The concert and events start at noon at Barcade Park. It's listed here as the party, and fireworks should start around 9:30. We do have cap metro shuttles that will be running from the Lago Vista Village Shopping Center. Green Center will be open the second Thursday and Saturday this month, so it's not open today, and it's not open this Saturday. It will be open the 8th and the 10th, the 8th from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and Saturday, the 10th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. I have a reminder from the police department, fireworks are illegal. I think these are unauthorized fireworks or illegal within the city of Lago Vista city limits. Illegal fireworks are punishable by a fine up to $2,000. Police in the city have alerted citizens of this law every year and worked to address the issue. We encourage the public to spread the word so that we can keep our community safe and sound. New city manager, Tracy Lavica, will start on the 14th, and will be in attendance at our next city council meeting. And I haven't looked, Tracy might even be online tonight. I don't know if she's watching or not. I don't see her. Anyway, she will definitely be here at the next council meeting on the 15th. Holiday schedule, City Hall will be closed Monday, I believe, in observance of Independence Day, and that is all that I have. Anybody else? Anything? Shalane, do you have anything? No.
I don't, Mayor, thank you.
Do anybody in the audience have any items of interest that I've not covered?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say that Kevin Sullivan's been nominated and has been chosen as Lion of the Year.
Wow. Lion of the Year.
Thank you.
Oh, and our streets were addressed earlier tonight. No, they are not complete, but they are working on them tonight and tomorrow night, and I believe they're scheduled to have it finished, barring any rain, by Saturday morning, and it won't be striped by Saturday morning, but supposedly the scheduled paving will be done by Saturday morning.
Mr. Mayor, I understand from our city engineer that the striping will be done mid-July.
Mid-July. All right. Let's see, do we have?
The striping.
Striping.
And we will be getting an update on some projects from our city engineer later on in the agenda. All right, well, if that's everything, then we will move into public hearing and possible action. First consideration. Item number three, the Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to consider an ordinance of the city council of Lago Vista, Texas, amending the official zoning map by changing the zoning district for approximately 2.183 acres of land that is not planted but located within the boundaries of Lago Vista Travis Plaza, a subdivision of record in Book 39, page 50, of the plat records of Travis County, Texas, and generally described as being located at 20806 Bonanza Street from P2, which is Park and Green Belt District passive, to R4 multifamily residential district and providing for related matters. Let me go over here. In your packet, cover sheet and summary, matched is the staff land use report specifically prepared for the city council for considering this application. It precedes the packet that was presented to planning and zoning for their use at their June 10th, 2021 meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of a zoning change to the R4 district for this property. All seven members were present. The majority of the discussion dealt with the topography and its likely impact on limiting the density of the future development, as well as the number of separate lots that will result from their required subdivision approval. While the PEC transmission lines will also impact the number of feasible duplex lots, the developer who made the successful offer on the property is hoping that his engineer will recommend a configuration that yields more density than predicted by the staff. Regardless, any subdivision that includes more than four lots would require approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission in addition to the administrative approval of subdivision construction plans that address all drainage issues, detention, and water quality improvements. The inclusion of as many as three residential units on a single lot would require design approval by the PNZ Commission and an administrative site development plan review that would address those same drainage concerns. There was also a rather lengthy discussion related to whether a change to the R2 might yield any advantages. PNZ determined that there were no advantages and that the introduction of a new zoning designation in this area might ultimately yield to unintended consequences. The potential developer was concerned with that the topography and future subdivision might dictate the need for a smaller building footprint and a two-story structure, while building much lower than the highest grade elevation on a lot might allow a two-story structure with the more restrictive limits of the R2 district, and R4 district approval would preclude that concern and potentially avoid the need for a special exception application. I will open the public hearing at 6:49 PM. And so I've read the cover sheet. Roy, do you have anything you would like to add to this at this time?
No, sir.
Nothing from Roy. All right, is there any comments or questions from my council members?
Yes. So I have some rather extensive comments on this one. I, I actually, this morning, took the time to go back and watch that Planning and Zoning Commission session, so I saw exactly what happened, and, and I actually did not see any significant discussion of whether this land should be parkland or not. This discussion was almost exclusively, should it be R2 or R4. There was one exception to that, maybe two exceptions. One of the commissioners noted that when he had been president of KLVB, the city offered this particular lot to KLVB to be a community garden. KLVB turned it down, not because the topology was unacceptable, but because the city did not want to invest the money to run water to that lot. And, and there was one commissioner, and I'm stretching a little bit here, I think this is a quote, one commissioner who said something like, "It would have been nice if that would have been a park, but I guess that's not gonna happen." That, that, that was the extent of the park discussion. It was essentially assumed by planning and zoning that they had been told by council that it should be residential, and the question was, should it be R2 or R4? That's, that's the way I interpreted the meeting as I watched it this morning. So I think that it hasn't had a fair look at, should it be retained as parkland or not? And I've gotten, man, just a lot of feedback from citizens that we need to be retaining parkland. As I look at this location, there's, I mean, if it's residential, R4 is perfectly appropriate for that, no doubt, in my mind. The question in my mind is, should it still be park, or should it be residential? And as I look at that location, and we'll look at it more in the packet, there's a lot of residential land around that that's not built on, so we could have more R4 or R2 units built at neighboring properties on land that's already zoned to R4. And, and I'll say this, I also noted that the builder who is, you know, looking to build on this site is building some duplexes, and his plan, as I understand it, would be to build duplexes on this site, and I've seen the duplexes he builds, and they're very nice. So, you know, this is a, this is a quality builder, would be a quality product, and I really think it comes down to, should we as a city retain this as a potential park infrastructure in the midst of fairly high density residential, or let it be yet another piece of high-density residential? The last thing I'll say is, it came to my attention, based on citizen feedback, that, that this lot was never brought to the attention of our Parks and Rec Committee, so they've never had a chance to look at it or discuss, you know, could we use it as a park? And so they were a little surprised by that. I actually asked our Parks and Rec Director if he had some knowledge of it. He had not looked at the site before, he looked at it today, and his initial reaction was certainly some things we could do with that to make it parkland. He had some specific suggestions, which I think are not germane to this discussion, but he had some very specific ideas. But he also is, you know, very respectful and said if the council decision is, we need more multifamily housing, that's certainly a need in the city, and he would understand it, but he would know what to do with it as parkland, if it was retained as parkland. So I feel like it never got the appropriate attention on whether it should be parkland or residential. The attention it got was, if it's not gonna be parkland, should it be R2 or R4? And I just feel like that's, that's not gotten the public feedback that it needs to have.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, I gotta say, this is on the, this is on the contract, isn't it? This is the piece of property that's on the contract that Clyde's been working on. The closing date's supposedly the 15th. The closing date's supposedly the 15th. I don't know how you get out of a contract with a person that you already have a contract with.
Yes, sir, Councilman Williams. I'm, I'm not suggesting we get out of the contract. I'm saying this is the first time that we have a council, as council, have considered, should this be rezoned to R4 from parkland, and I'm, I'm suggesting that, I'm not sure that's gotten the appropriate feedback from citizens, and I personally don't think it's a good idea.
Councilor Marion.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. So I had some similar questions to what Councilor Prince just raised. In speaking to some of the folks from the Parks and Rec Committee, they did express some concern that this had not come before them to specifically consider whether or not there could be something done with that parcel of property to retain it as green space and leave it zoned as, as a park. And so, so those were, were those concerns, but I also am wondering if the intent was to rezone this property. I'm wondering why it wasn't brought forward to rezone prior to listing it for sale. The timing just seems a little odd, so I, I think similar to what Councilor Prince has, has just shared, I'm wondering if we should perhaps give some more consideration to whether or not this should be retained as green space or parks land, because we certainly can, can use it. As I mentioned, Parks and Rec will be bringing forward their, their report, and there are lots of ideas that they have for, you know, ways to, to add to some, some park space here in our city.
Yes.
To provide some information about what has gone on in the past, this particular plot of land has been under discussion for a long time. It is zoned right now as park, but so are a number of lots in town that have not been developed and not been looked at as being a park. In discussion that I had at least two, two and a half years ago about this particular area. Most of the discussion was that the amount of money that it was going to cost to deliver, to develop this, to get water to it, was more than what the city was willing to spend, particularly when we were considering building the activity center that we built out on 1431. There was a real question about whether there would be money or not in order to develop this into any kind of park facility. The topography of the, of the area would make it hard to develop. There are things that you could definitely do with it, I have no question, but I can guarantee you that right now, that money is not in the budget. There is not money to do it, and it would be down the road. It is an area that has been sitting unused, basically uncontrolled as far as fire-wise or any kind of clearing to avoid a fire hazard, and it was one of many lots that were considered to basically be surplus. And it was one of many lots that were considered to basically be surplus for the city. This came up along the same time that we put the strip lots behind the homes. And some other lots that we owned on the market. At that point. Not the current Parks and Recreation Committee. But the Parks and Recreation Committees that had seen it or whatever had no interest in it. And so it was put on the market. Someone looked at it and decided that they could develop it. Having walked over part of it, I really question whether they can. But that's basically how we got to where we are now. Basically, what we're discussing is whether we rezone this or we don't rezone this. An agreement to sell this land has already been made. And has been in place for. Seven months. So. My feeling is that we've got someone who wants to use this land appropriately. It is not land that we have money to develop at this time. It's not in the budget. And with all the things that we've got coming up, a lot of which we're going to discuss later on today. I don't have any idea when we would have the money to think about using this as a park. So. My personal opinion is that we should go on and rezone this, go along with the. The contract that we've already decided decided on and signed. And meet the obligations of that.
Yes, Counselor Sullivan.
Um, I would make the comment that, and I think Dick might have made said the same thing. This thing's been zoned as a park since the city took ownership. And and if it's so desirable as a park, why has nothing been done about it? I just would comment with regard to something Shalane said. I recommended to then city manager Josh Ray that we rezone it before we put it on the market. Quite frankly, it was more from a real estate perspective, we probably could have gotten more for it if we had rezoned it. I'm not sure why that path wasn't taken, but certainly the recommendation was made that that take place. The staff report talks about potentially using this as a park and and. I think the comments are made that it's not very suitable because of topography to act as a park. And it might be a good idea for Mr. Jambo to jump in and provide some additional commentary on that. I would agree that we're under contract on this parcel. We knew all along what they were going to use it for. This is a step in the process and it seems wrong to change it at this point. Just my personal.
Thank you. Counselor Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two very quick follow ups. The the property, the the person who the buyer for the property bought it zoned parkland. It wasn't zoned R four when they decided that they wanted to purchase it. What we're deciding tonight is whether or not we agree to rezone. From park to R four, whether or not they decide to, you know, to continue with the purchases is is their decision. But they bought it as parkland. Or they entered into the agreement with it zoned as parkland. So I I'm not, I'm not sure that I necessarily agree. That we must rezone this. I I think we still have some discretion as to whether or not we decide to do that.
Right, yes.
Just a counter to what Ms. Marion just said. In the contract, they put in the special provisions that we would rezone the parcel. So that was in the contract.
In the contract.
So they had all the intentions of the world that it would become a R four property. Now, we've since found out from the city attorney that that is an illegal special provision. And we worked it a different way, but the bottom line is the intent was always there from the purchaser. That they were going to purchase it and use it as multifamily, not as parkland.
Yeah, and. From my perspective, you know, I'm kind of along the same lines as Kevin. This property's been out there as parkland for decades. It's been offered to K L V B, it's been offered to the P O A, it's been offered. To other people to use this as parkland. And nothing has ever happened. So eventually it got put on the list as property that was just sitting there. This came up, you know, initially several months ago, seven months ago. Nobody from the Parks and Rec Committee said anything then. Nobody from the audience that I know said anything about being parkland. Back when they when they approached us the first time around. So now here we are, seven, eight, nine months later, trying to finalize this. This sale. And now everybody all of a sudden decides it's not the best idea. But I think we've led the people on. That are wanting to purchase this for months with working with P E C. Having meetings with them about moving the transmission lines. We've extended the closing date a couple of times so that we could help. You know, you know, discuss this issue with P E C. And personally, I I just, I. Yeah, it might be a great piece of property for a park, but it never happened. And now to. String somebody along for eight, nine months, however long it's been, and then tell them, well, no, we've changed our mind. Now that, to me, that just does not seem right.
Mayor, I would agree that it would be disingenuous of us to, at this point in time, change. The plan that has been put forward some time back and I'm in full agreement with you that we should proceed with this.
Make one more. I actually agree with the points that you all have made with respect to the the buyer of the property. The problem that I have is. I I feel like the way this has happened over the last year did not get appropriate public vetting. And I I spent some time trying to find it, maybe out there. But I spent some time trying to find where we let the public know. That this this deal was moving from parkland to residential and that's the only way it went through. It may, the information may have been there, but it it was at best hard to find. And with respect to the Parks and Rec Committee. While it was discussed in council. It seems like council should have gone to the Parks and Rec Committee and asked for their feedback on it. And not assumed that because they didn't say anything, they didn't care. And then with respect to the to the buildability and the cost, you know. Two, three years ago, we couldn't afford to pave any of our roads. We're in a completely different situation now than we were in the previous thirty years. So I would suggest that because we haven't had the money to develop this as parkland in the past. Doesn't mean that we can't do it five years from now or two years from now or ten years from now. But if we sell it and rezone it, that's not, that's not going to happen. So I I just feel like. Either way, the decision goes, it's a very difficult decision because as has rightly been pointed out. The builder and prospective buyer has been led to believe that this would happen. I just, it's been very clear feedback to me from the public. That the public feels like they didn't get the awareness that this was coming and that it's. Whether it's minority or majority, I I don't know, but there's certainly at least a very vocal minority. That that feels like this is not a good idea and we should not proceed with it.
Thank you.
Yes, I just, Mr. Prince, you watched the P N Z meeting. I saw, I'm going to ask you this question. Was there anybody from the public who asked about the park, where there's anybody from Parks and Recs? Anybody that was there that asked, you know, why are we zoning this from parkland to?
Well, again, I think this is awareness problem. The answer to your question is no. But if the Parks and Rec Committee know that was being discussed in planning and zoning, no. Did the Parks and Rec Director know it was being discussed even tonight? I don't think he was aware of it even tonight that we were talking about it until I call and talk to him. So I think this is an awareness issue, not a lack of caring once the awareness is there.
So let me see. Yes, Counselor Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just to, again, to to kind of piggyback on what Counselor Prince has said. I I would agree. I I also reached out to Mr. Mobley and. And and he didn't have awareness that this was coming in front of. Counselor had gone in front of P N Z that that was parkland. So just wanted to follow up on that and and say that I I once again agree with those.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that it's clear for the public that that this land is zoned as P two. It is not dedicated park. If it was dedicated parkland, there is a process. It requires citizen vote to change it, to sell the property. So. I just want to make sure that that clarification is there for the record. It is not dedicated parkland. It is just zoned as P two, which means that it could be used for a park.
Thank you. Let me see. Anybody else? All right. Clive, is there anything you would like to add to?
I believe so. Through this for many months now. It was just one eye.
Clive, you would for the benefit of the folks on my way to set to the mic.
Reluctantly.
Clive Rutherford, I've been involved in this since a list of of surplus properties was handed to me by Josh Ray. My understanding was that that list was approved by city council. That these were surplus properties and that we needed to convert them into funds for the general fund. This particular property was a bit of an oddball because it's slightly larger than the the other ones. It was zone, was and is zoned P two, didn't really know what that meant. But it's not a park. It's never been a park. It's a scruffy piece of land. That, you know, I'm not quite sure what anybody could do with it. We found a buyer that was willing to develop it. And they came to us with with a very reasonable, actually the best offer. But it was contingent on the zoning being changed to R four. And P E C moving some power lines. It's has been pointed out, apparently such a contract is not legal. So we we've switched it around. The buyer is talking to P E C. It's for them to sort out with P E C where the power lines go. But it it still leaves us with the issue that they can't build on it unless it's residential. Our four suits best. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let me go back over here. All right, anybody, anything else from the council? All right, it's a public hearing, so I will open this up to the audience. And as I did previously, I'm going to start with the live audience members. So if there's anybody in the audience who would like to make comments.
What exactly, I'm not familiar with this whole thing. Obviously, I haven't been here for a while. What exactly are they wanting to build on this piece of property?
Duplexes. Duplexes.
I didn't.
Duplexes.
Duplexes.
Duplexes. Residential, multifamily.
Do we really need multifamily houses? What are we trying to do? Turn this place into to Austin? Because that's what you're going to do. First comes. Do. Duplex. Next comes apartments. And third, section eight. Now, we fought that about a year and a half, two years ago. And somebody came in here and sat here and tried to convince people that we should allow them to build section eight. On Dawn Drive. And everybody went ballistic. But I think if you let people know. If you want to build duplex houses. You're going to find them go just as ballistic. Now, and you better let them know or they're going to be really, really mad at you. But I think you need to think about the effect on this, on the city. It's supposed to be almost like a. Well, it used to be for retired people. But it was all single, single dwell houses. Single dwelling houses. And now all of a sudden you're going to move in duplex. What does that mean? You've got people who have no interest in the house, in the building or the area at all. All they're going to do is move in for a while and then move out. You better be careful. You don't know what you're doing if you start moving these people in. You know, and I'm not saying what group of people it is, because it could be. The highest paid people in in the world, you know, in the country. But still, if you're on a duplex, you don't own it. You're renting and you don't care. And if the thing falls apart, you'll move to another duplex or another place. Then who's stuck with cleaning it up? That's my only point. Be careful. And the final point is if you're going to keep. Changing the zoning, why have it in the first place? Why even bother? If every time somebody walks in, it's a, yeah, I'm going to build this and I need to change the zoning. And you run in and, yep, we should change. You know, just like that thing I was, that place I was talking about on Canyon. They hid this thing in a corner somewhere, covered with bushes. And you saw a little yellow. Sign behind it. I had to stop, get out, figure out what it was. How does that help the citizens? And if you just start things like that, what are the rest of the citizens going to think about it? They could either think about it. There is, from your standpoint, from the citizen's standpoint. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Under the microphone, state your name to the audience.
I'm a very new resident here. I was talking about buying property the last time I was here and that's happening tomorrow. So one of the things that I've been doing to prepare to live here is I've been watching some of the meetings online. And so I watched the P N Z meeting and I just happened to watch the Parks meeting as well. And so some of the things that I saw when I watched those meetings is that the Parks Committee was actually talking about how. Some of the surplus land, they see it, even the strips being able to be made into a trail system for the community. And Catherine Dennis, Katie Dennis, Karen Dennis. Went ahead on to say that she kind of hoped that the city would put a moratorium. On selling these properties until there was a more comprehensive plan about what to do with them. And that really struck a chord with me because, you know, I came in asking about the comprehensive master plan. And kind of heard that, you know, the council member Williams worked on it a little bit, but that it really needed major rebuilding. That it was really old and I think there's going to be so much development here. I mean, I'm one of the people on that bandwagon and I think everybody's going to want to zone R four, right? I mean, everybody wants to live close to Austin. The the values are going up. And it seems like if there's not really a strong comprehensive master plan. In selling off these surplus properties before there is one. Be, you might, it might be something that's regrettable. And I know when I saw Karen Dennis talking about it, I thought. What a shame it would be to sell off these properties that could have some real value to the city later. Without really thinking about how they can be built. And so I just kind of wanted to connect those dots because I hear not everybody goes to all of it. Me personally, as a person who's going to live here, I hope a lot of parkland gets. Saved from development. Me and my kids hike and love to be out in nature and really treasure that and love that. About La Gavista and so I hope that that's a priority. My understanding about the land deal, this deal that was happening, is that it's just contingent on the sense. So if the zoning doesn't go through, the deal is just done, right? Like, it's not like the city is somehow liable for it. That's my understanding from watching the P N Z meeting. That's my understanding from watching the PNC meetings. So it seems to me that it would almost be naughty, actually, to promise somebody that it would be leased out in an effort to sell it before it came to the council. So I kind of hope that the decision that gets made today is less about that one buyer and more about our citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the live audience? All right, I will go to my online audience and busy go.
Hi, hi, Mayor and City Council members. Hi, well, I'm actually on the Parks and Rec and I've been on there since January. And I did see the meetings in December. Last year, I think they had some problems going on with the Parks and Rec, but I think we have it all straightened out now. And maybe one of the reasons that Parks and Rec didn't look at this piece of land when supposedly it was showed to them is because they were being razzled dazzled by the new Sunset Park. So they were pretty busy with the whole Sunset Park planning. And so maybe they didn't even think they would look at the other land because there's always been heard, like Dick Weatherly was saying, there's no money in the budget for parks. Well, the parks now is opening up their own 3 or 501, 3C charitable charity organization. So we could actually maybe get that park area done for free through donations. It wouldn't maybe cost the city anything. And so I live in this area. That's down the block from me. That's where I walk every single morning. I walk down that way. We have a sidewalk that takes you down to the dance studio. And this lot is at the end of the dance studio. And if you look at this area, we have a lot of homes. There's already the apartments down on the corner. There's some duplexes. We have some high two-story places. I live in a condo, so, you know, I'm not against this. But if that was parkland, it would have been nice to have a little place somewhere close that we could use this only, part of the only sidewalks in Lago Vista to actually walk to. So, I mean, if there was a picnic table there and a little green area, and if Paul Roberts wanted to donate another swing set like he did the little V on, right there at, what is that, Boggy and Highland Lakes? He, if you look at that little triangle, that's a beautiful little area right now because KBLB got in there, some citizens got in there, I think even some lions got in there. They built the swing set, they put in a little bench, and that's a beautiful little community park. Now, so am I hearing that that area can have a little community park? But because this area is condos and apartments and we don't deserve to have some green space? I mean, this is part of the only sidewalking the city has in Lago Vista is this right down Dawn. And that would take you right down to that new little park. So if you were riding your skateboard or riding your bicycle and you were a kid in this area, you would now have a place to go hang out instead of the graffiti wall, which has turned into a trash dump. Because that's where the kids in this area used to go to was the graffiti wall. But now that's a dump and you guys all know that. So I'm just wondering when and who, because I come to these meetings also every, I'm probably here every meeting. And if I would have known that little lot was coming up for sale, I probably would have said something because it's my neighborhood and you all know how I am about my neighborhood. So that's all I have to say. And coming from the Parks and Rec, we have just had two meetings because we are trying to find any lot sizes. We're even looking up at the airport and these little weird slivers to try to come up with some type of green space and leaving green space that we can do these little tiny parks in. And I think that's what's going to beautify Lago Vista and bring more people here and attract more people is if that you actually leave something that's beautiful instead of just a building everywhere you go. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else on the online audience who would like to address the city council? All right, see you none. I am going to leave this agenda, this public hearing open. This was the first presentation. Don't, I do not feel it is ready for action. So I am going to leave this one open and we will bring it back at the next council meeting. And we will go to agenda item number four. The Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit application pursuant to Section 17 of Chapter 14 of the Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to allow for a prefabricated accessory building with a dissimilar roof from the principal residence and located within the required rear yard setback at 20308 Rock Park Lane, Country Club Estates, Section 11, Lot 2671. And I will go through the. All right, executive summary. Following this cover sheet is the staff land use report. Prepare for council. It's preceded, it precedes the packet that was given to planning and zoning at their June 10th meeting. All seven members were in attendance. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit subject to the colors of the prefabricated building matching the colors of the principal residence to the extent possible. They also included a condition for compliance with International Residential Code, primarily because the applicant mentioned that one of the primary functions of the structure would be to replace the exercise room currently within their residence. As such, the building will likely need to include the ability to moderate extreme temperatures. It could be handled by portable devices, but as a minimum, electrical service would undoubtedly be required. As is often the case, these conditions serve primarily as a reminder or means to inform the property owner of applicable requirements that the Development Services Department is obligated to enforce. The discussion rather quickly dispensed with any potential concerns about the encroachment in the rear yard setback. The impact to adjacent property was thought to be extremely minor compared to the alternative of relocating the propane tank that serves the swimming pool heater. Instead, the bulk of the discussion involved the need for the dissimilar gamble barn-style roof proposed by the application. The property owner stated it was needed due to the added storage capacity it provided above the eaves compared to either a gable or hip roof. Staff is not sure how compelling the commissioners found this reason. They were willing to recommend the relief necessary to allow this dissimilar roof. Based on the comments, it seems that they likely considered the relief warranted by the fact that the roof of the accessory building would remain largely concealed. And I will open this public hearing at 7:26 PM. And we will start with council comments, questions. Whoa, before I do that, Roy, is there anything that I need to add to this?
No, sir. I'm not sure whether the applicant's in the audience, but I did, I did contact them.
Yes.
Okay, well, that would, that would be, is that BM that I see?
Yeah, Ben Marshall.
Ben Marshall. All right, Mr. Marshall, since you were in attendance, would you like to address the council?
Yeah. Essentially, you know, because of COVID, me and my wife both have to work from home now. And our companies decided to make that a permanent arrangement. So we're needing, we've got two little kids, so we need extra space. Hence the need for the large shed with that roof. Roof being the extra storage that we need.
All right. Thank you very much. Counsel, questions? Yes, Counsel Weatherly.
I went by and looked at this property as I do with all of these requests. And where they're talking about putting this, I cannot see how that would be any kind of distraction for the neighborhood. It's definitely not going to be something that's primarily in the view of the other properties in the area. The tough sheds are all over town. This one is a little bit larger than some of the others that we've seen. But if this is a little bit smaller with that roof, they could put it back there anyway. So I see no reason why this shouldn't be approved.
All right. Anybody else on council?
I also like the fact that PNC made it, you know, mandatory that the building match their primary resident. So it won't stick out. It won't look any different as far as the building part of it, the lower part of it will look very similar to the house.
Mayor, the council, solid. Thank you. The only concern I had was I believe this building's going to be close to 14 feet tall. And it's going to be shoved up against the property line over there next to the privacy fence. And I know the lot right next door is vacant right now, but the way things are going, I don't think it'll remain that way that long. And I guess one question I have is are there any windows on that side of that building that would be above the privacy fence on that side? And that's probably really my only question. That's close to the property line and it's a relatively tall structure overlooking the neighboring lot. That was the only concern I had.
So, Mr. Marshall. On that, I'm trying to bring up the map right here. A lot on that side, will there be any window space in that side?
Yeah, there will, but they're going to be below the roof. I mean, not the roof, the fence line. It's not like, it's not a two-story shed. It's a one-story shed with, you know, extra space at the top. There's not going to be any windows in the roof or anything that could peek in down somebody else's property or anything like that.
Is the topography, did it replace above or below or same height?
That side is about the same. There's not much height difference on that side at all, really. It's pretty flat right there.
Okay. That would be.
It'd be the one window.
That would be looking, that would be at the rear of their house.
And it's also close to the property line on the two, two properties open to fence, right? Really close to the property line. The house would not be built right behind.
So this doesn't really pertain to the building itself, but I'm going to address something that Mr. Zurich brought up in the public comments earlier. And that pertains to why do we get, why do we build things? Why do we allow things to get built the way they do? Mr. Zurich, just so you know, back in 2019, the state legislature passed a new law that cities can no longer regulate building standards. So unless, unless the home is being built within an existing HOA, all they have to meet is a building, international building code. So you will see houses go up in Lago Vista that don't necessarily fit the surroundings anymore because the state has made it where they don't have to. So that's to answer your question from earlier.
So you had standards. And it was a standard written that said, this is how you're going to build it. This is what the foundations look like. This is how high it is going to be. And that's part of the city's.
Right, and those two still exist.
That will be a different story. If you're going to let all these people come in and build God knows what, you wrecked the city.
All right.
But whoever is allowing this nonsense to go on.
Talk to him in Austin.
Right, so anyway, didn't mean to open up that discussion. I just wanted to answer that question because it just popped into my head thinking about this to answer previously. We are still discussing just this conditional use permit. Is there anybody else on council? Marion, Council Marion, did you have any comments on this one?
Couple of very simple questions. Thank you so much. The first one was, in the second paragraph of the executive summary, the very last sentence talks about these conditions serve primarily as a reminder or means to inform the property owner of applicable requirements that the Development Services Department is obligated to enforce. So I wasn't quite sure what this was referring to. Is this referring to enforcing that there's electricity in there to moderate temperatures? I wasn't quite sure what that was getting at and I wondered if somebody could clarify and also share if that's something that we're obligated, the city's obligated to enforce. How is that enforced? And then the other question I have is under the impact, if approved, says the accessory building could be permitted subject to documentation of the required colors and some method to prevent interior temperature extremes. What sort of documentation would that include?
All right, Roy, would you answer those? Council Marion, please.
The International Residential Code requires that any building that's occupied by people on a regular basis include the, whatever means are necessary to modulate the temperatures to avoid extreme cold and extreme heat. We wanted to make sure that the applicant understood that as early as possible rather than to, you know, the guy that's going to review the building permit, he won't know that it's not a storage building. You follow me? A storage building, it doesn't need to meet those requirements. However, this application acknowledged that they intend to use it for an exercise room. So we're, you know, we're using this to remind them and the building official when he reviews the permit application to be aware that some, some means or method of regulating temperature is going to be required. That's, you know, that we regulate that through the building permit. You know, the purpose of putting it here is to inform both the building official and the applicant of that requirement so that we don't hold up a building permit application while it waits in line for 30 days because they didn't consider that. I'm not sure if, did I answer your question?
That was the first one.
You did on that, on that question, yes. And then there was the other question on the documentation. Thank you.
That, that's it. I mean, the documentation would be, you know, if you're not going to put in mechanical ventilation like an attic fan and, you know, a space heater, just show us that you're going to put in electricity and, you know, put in portable devices to handle the things.
So that, so Roy, the other, the other portion was documentation regarding the exterior colors.
Right. They just submit something to show us, you know, the colors they're selecting and, you know, otherwise we won't know or they won't know to submit them.
Where's, where's this? Outside of this little summary right here, where's this notated? So that the building inspector will know to look for these colors.
Once this is approved or otherwise, I put those notes in the building permit application so that the building official, when he reviews it, will know those requirements.
Okay, so that goes into, into the empty in comments? Okay.
Those are notes I had. And, you know, and he'll make the, if they don't do it, he'll make the applicant aware in the review comments.
Thank you. Anybody else on council? All right, it's public hearing. So is there anybody in my live audience who would like to address council? All right. Public hearing. So is there anybody in my live audience who would like to address council? All right. See you none. Anybody on the virtual video conference? All right. Well, based on the comments and feedback, I'm going to close this public hearing at seven, seven 38 PM. And I'll open this one up for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit application for the home at 20308 Rock Park, Wright Rock Park Lane.
With the amend, with the amendment of the color of the fabricated building matching the principal residence.
And that the construction provisions accessory building meet all requirements of 2015 international residential code.
Isn't all that in the ordinance?
Well, when you make your motion, you've got to, they, they gave us four options.
Okay.
So all we're asking is, is that are you going for option A where they recommended the, the two items, the colors and texture? And the adherence to the international residential code?
Let me tell you what page that's on.
It's on forty five.
Forty five.
Just saying, I'll tell you. Try and get the right one.
Mayor, do we also need to amend to include the temperature regulation?
Yeah, that's.
Well, yeah. The reference of the international residential code covers that.
I, I believe.
Okay, great.
And or option A on page 45 is what planning and zoning recommended.
Correct. And I would make the motion with the alternative option A.
Second. All right. I have the amended motion and a second. Any further discussion? Let's see, make sure, can't see my screen. I'm going to make sure. Okay, notion. All right. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed nay. Hearing none. Motion carries unanimous. And we are on number five now. Okay, La Gavista City Council, holding a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit application pursuant to section 17 of chapter 14 of the La Gavista Code of Ordinances to allow for an accessory building with a dissimilar roof that exceeds 50% of the floor area of the principal residence at 20501 Sunset Lane, Country Club Estates, Section 11, Lot 2741A. Let's see. This one. All right. Following this cover sheet and summary is the staff land use report specifically prepared for the city council when considering this application. It is, it precedes the packet that was provided to the planning and zoning for their June 10th meeting. Planning and zoning commission unanimously voted to recommend approval on the condition that the applicant prepared new building elevations and other supporting documents for review by the development services department staff prior to an accessory building permit application. These new drawings and documents would more accurately reflect exactly what they intend to build and demonstrate compliance with the conditions specified in their recommendation. Colors and dissimilar roof. All seven members were in attendance and participated in the recommendation. The bulk of the discussion was initiated by the comments of a neighboring property owner during the public hearing. Those comments were in support of the proposed location and the use of one larger accessory building rather than two smaller ones that might have avoided the need for this application. It was felt that those decisions helped preserve the existing vegetation that was such an important feature of the site and the surrounding area. However, there were a number of concerns about the appearance of the exterior of the accessory and whether it was compatible with any existing structures. The concerns went beyond the roof and colors and related to the massing and scale of the proposed accessory building. The commissioners reinforced those same concerns throughout their discussion. The applicant acknowledged that they were seeking this approval before making the more significant investment needed to complete detailed and accurate design documents. They did not seem to object to the recommended conditions or the need for additional effort before seeking a building permit. All right. So we are discussing the conditional use permit. P and Z did recommend unanimously the conditional use permit, but they have to come back with new drawings and documents before they do their building. All right. Well, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:43 PM. And Roy, is there anything that you'd like to add to this at the moment?
No, just to, but to reinforce the idea that the planning commission, the, the people in the neighborhood and the applicant themselves basically said they have no problem and intended to do something that looks more or less like the house. And that's really simply what, what they've been asked to do is send some drawings before they apply for the building permit to, to make sure that's, you know, what we get.
All right. Well, so who will? Who will make that decision on whether it actually meets planning and zoning's?
Right. They delegated that to the staff. That was their intent. You, obviously you don't have to agree with them. But, but that, that was their recommendation.
Okay. All right. Is the applicant here? Yes. Would you like to address counsel at this time? Since you're in my audience, if you would, state your, my live audience, please state your name for the.
My name is Debbie.
My name's Dawn.
Okay. Make sure they can hear you.
Sorry. Uh, we're, we're working with a builder, a local builder, Greg. And he's actually referred us to Palmer Design, who's willing to meet the criteria that's provided. Like he's going to make the pitch and make the colors and put the rock and have it similar. We have.
We have every intention of following.
Yeah. There's six lots that we have, and this will sit on the two lots to the left of the property.
All right.
So we can for sure turn drawings in. We have an architect that's willing to look at the property and look at the house.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I was just making sure, I was just making sure if, if council went along with P and Z and put this in there that it didn't just, you know, go away or something down the line. So I just wanted to make sure exactly who was going to be following up to make sure that it was actually, you know, the recommendations and intentions were met.
So we would turn it back to planning and zoning for approval and then, then it would go to permit? Is that what the next step, I mean, if you approved it, that's who would look at it again?
If we, if we approve the conditional use permit with the same requirements that plan and zoning has recommended, then you would submit everything to development services. Unless, well, unless we decide that we want to review it. Right now, the intent is it's been planning and zoning has put it on staff to review the, the designs. So that's the way it would be unless we vote otherwise. But yeah, you would just go to development services and they would look and as long as it meets, you know, the planning and zoning council recommendation, then they could issue the building permit.
That's what our intention was, is get the architect to make all the detail of everything.
Yeah. So we, we've just never built anything before, so we didn't know how to get started.
Y'all are in the house though too, right?
Yeah, we own the house since 2018.
Okay. So you're not building both at the same time?
No, no, no.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Questions, comments from council? Let me see. Green's here. Okay.
I, I'll just say that I, I think we've been fairly consistent when we've been asked to look at buildings that are bigger than 50% of, you know, of the residence size. And if it's on an oversized or multiple lot, that's been a pretty big factor we've proven. So in my mind, you know, this is a huge lot.
Yeah.
And I, I think it's pretty easy approval. And I would, I would just follow the lead of planning zoning on this myself.
Yeah, that was one thing I noticed looking at the map when I saw the layout of the lot. I was like, wow.
Drive in front of it. It even looks better.
They have some property.
Congratulations on getting that.
Anybody else? Let me see. Let me change back over here. See if Shalane has her hand up. All right. Well, that's it from council. So it's a public hearing. Is there anybody in the live audience who has any comments? Anybody from my online audience have any comments? All right. Well, based on that, I will close the public hearing at 7:49 and bring it back to council and it's open for action. Mayor?
Yes, sir. If I can, I'd suggest that we approve this application subject to revised building elevations and other required documentation submitted to the development services department prior to a building permit application that demonstrates compliance with the following two conditions, a use of gable rather than a gamble roof and the colors of both the roof and other exterior finished materials of the accessory building will resemble the colors used on the existing principal residential structure.
Second. All right. And if anybody's curious, that is outlined on page 69. So I have the motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Is that you, you was that exactly what planning and zoning recommended, what you just said? You, you made this stipulation on the roof not being a gamble roof.
I went with options of a gamble versus the, the other.
A gable rather than a gamble.
Correct. And I'm, to be honest with you, I'm not sure. Usually staff puts the P and Z recommendation as the first option. And that is the first option.
Correct.
Is this, Mr. Jamboree, can you confirm? Did, did P and Z recommend a gable rather than a gamble roof on this design?
Yes, sir. And that, that is what's on the, the principal residence.
Okay. Thank you.
A fairly steep one, I might add. It's, it's steep so it can accommodate two stories.
And, and the applicant can make that work with gable roof rather than gamble?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
They're nodding in the room as well. So that's.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed nay. Hearing none. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Good luck.
And we are on number six. Discussion, consideration and possible action regarding ordinance number 21-07-01-01, an ordinance of the city council of the city of La Gavista, Texas, amending ordinance 18-09 dash 20 dash 04, rules of procedure, providing for publication, providing for penalties and effective date repealer, severability, proper notice and open meetings clause. Let's see. I think I'm just going to at this point, turn this over to you, Mr. Sullivan. There's not really much for me to read on the summaries. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The subcommittee did meet again. If you recall, last time we met, we tabled the item because we knew we needed to get with Ms. Silvera and talk about a few items. We did do that and we made some edits to the document that you guys see in your packet. Guys and gals, excuse me. I would note three things that I think we know, we need to take into account. I brought this up with Ms. Silvera. I, I recognized that the capitalization was all over the place with regard to like references to city council, commissions, committees, boards, that kind of thing. And I got some feedback from her about how to do it, but then she, I, bottom line is it, it is not correct at this point with regard to capitalization. So I would just recommend that if we do decide to move forward with this tonight, that we put the caveat in there that capitalization will be refined appropriately before it is published. The second point I would make is, is that I'd noticed after we finished, I needed to make an adjustment in section four around section 16 and 17 to update adjournment to be number 4 dot 17 because we added a 4 dot 16. And then finally, that the table of contents will need to be updated appropriately. Should we decide to move forward with that, to take that last item into account? So those are the three main things and I'll throw it open. We can answer any questions that folks might have with regard to the changes that were made in this last session or they've got any additions. I know, Mayor, you had some concerns and I'd be curious to know if you feel like we covered what your concerns were.
Yeah, I've got my notes. I'm going to, I'll save mine for last. I'll let anybody else go first. And I'll see. Council Marion, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, I wanted to ask if we might have Ms. Silvera weigh in on the topic of OMA and how open meetings act and how it applies differently to certain boards and commissions and committees? And whether or not we might need to add something in the rules of procedure specific to how to address any violations?
Certainly. So just for clarification purposes, unlike the public information act, which applies to all documents and the information that's gathered by, say, staff or board committees and commissions, that applies kind of across the board. Open meetings acts a little bit, is a little bit different animal. And that it applies to the governing body of the group that and typically only to those board committees, commissions and of course the council that have either quasi judicial authority or rulemaking authority. And so these rules of procedure apply to all of our board committees and commissions as well as the council, even those that only have advisory authority. So technically, the open meetings act requirements would not apply to many of our advisory boards, committees and commissions unless there was a finding by court that the council regularly essentially rubber stamps decisions of that particular body. And if that, if a court were to find that, that the council looks upon their work as more than just advisory and would simply approve it without further review, then that body could be subject to the open meetings act. I, I haven't found that that has been the case for our council. And so at this point, it, it is unlikely that the open meetings act provisions would apply directly to those board committees and commissions that are advisory only. However, the council has opted to require open government training for all of our boards, councils, our committees and commissions, regardless of whether they're advisory. One, as a precautionary measure. Two, as a transparency mechanism. When you apply the open meetings act requirements to all of our boards, committees and commissions, it then provides better access to the public for those processes. Make sure that we have good documents and records that they have access to those meetings, that they're not held behind closed doors, for example. And in that regard, I, I would recommend that we continue to require those types of processes be applied to those advisory boards, committees and commissions for transparency purposes. The question then becomes how do you, do you address potential violations of the open meetings act that are committed by those advisory board members? And because the council essentially is adopting those requirements as a policy and not as a matter of state law. because the council essentially is adopting those requirements as a policy and not as a matter of state law, the council would address those issues with those board committees and commissions as a matter of policy. Meaning that you would not go to the attorney general if there was a potential violation of that. They would not be able to consider them. However, if you adopted that, those processes as by policy, then any provisions related to disciplinary action or violation of your, of your, of the policy that you adopted would be addressed through the rules of procedure as those are applicable to your board committees and commissions. For example, in the proposed version, you have processes applicable to addressing issues related to behavior of your board committees and commissions that are advisory that essentially sets up a system or a process that's very similar to what's applicable to your non-advisory, meaning your board of adjustment, your planning zoning, and your, the council itself, and your Building and Standards Commission where and so you would look to, I believe it's section seven versus, I think, section 3.11. So that's how you would look at it. It would be a policy. It would not be something that's applied as a state law violation.
Thank you. Mayor, can I ask Ms. Silveira a clarifying question, please?
Sure.
So part of the reason why we got together to meet was you had some concerns about what we had in the policies and procedures or rules of procedure with regard to these issues, whether the disciplinary or open meanings act. And, and we walked through each of those and, and made the appropriate adjustments so that we dictated different actions where it was appropriate. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So do you feel comfortable with the document at this point that we have made the appropriate adjustments for those purposes?
Yes, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Thank you.
You have follow up, Counsel Marion?
I do, yes. So, so Erin, if I'm understanding what you what you explained and then the follow up from Counselor Sullivan, do you feel like anything else needs to be added to the rules of procedure and make these things more clear? So that should an issue come up later, we have a clear process in place and there's, there's not necessarily room for subjectivity, I guess, in making these decisions? Or do you feel like what's there now is totally adequate? And we can, we can address those issues if they come up later without any problems or opening ourselves up to any sort of grievance?
Thank you, Counsel Marion. I do feel that what you have in place is sufficient to address a rule. Your rules of procedure do not address every possible violation of a whether it's state law or your policies in specific detail. The, the section 7.5B, I believe, is what you have proposed as possible actions that the council possible actions that would be taken with regard to your advisory boards, committees and commissions, meaning no actions, private center, public center or removal. Those are the options that, that you have that would be appropriate to apply. In any particular circumstance, when you have a violation of a city policy, a city ordinance, or another law, you would have to look at that particular law or rule in detail to kind of guide you with regard to what you think might be the most appropriate action to take. There would not necessarily be a need to revise this document to address every possible scenario. It's just an unyieldly approach. What you have is what the potential possible disciplinary actions could be. And you would look at the facts surrounding the fact circumstance to determine which action is most appropriate.
Good. I'm going to change all that here in a minute. Yeah. Did you, you have a?
I have a question for Sullivan. So, Ms. Silveira, do we have a uniform method of training the people that volunteer to serve on our boards, commissions and committees? And I don't think that we do. I think that's a lead in question. But are we prepared to do that in the future so that when we have new members join that they will be able to get the proper training to avoid these kinds of, of issues?
So you raise a very good question, Counselor. That there is one aspect of our board committees and commissions that has been very clear and I think very longstanding. Applicability of the training required regarding the Open Meetings Act and Public Information Act has long been something that we have advised our members that they were required to do within the first 90 days of their tenure on that board committee. That is clear. What has maybe not happened as regularly is a more specific in-depth training for each particular board committee or commission regarding their specific duties and how those things function. Now, I'll tell you that over the past year, I have conducted trainings for Board of Adjustments, Building and Standards, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, where the council liaison has requested that I provide that training to that particular group. I will, I'm ready to provide that at the request, the existing rules of procedure and the resolution relating to duties regarding advisor boards and committees. Put the duty on the council liaison to ensure that the, their particular body received the training necessary and even included a provision that would allow for requested funds if necessary to do that. So where, where my services have been requested, I provided that training. I think we have the framework in place. I don't know that the requests have always been made of your city attorney. I've been with you for a year and a half now. I'm not sure what the request was to my predecessor. But I do recommend highly that each board and committee and commission receives some level of training, additional training in addition to the open government training that is typically done online. Because there are some unique aspects of each of those board committees and commissions that's really good to highlight. Right at the beginning, it helps those meetings move function smoother or better, and it really highlights the duties of each of the persons that are on that body as well as of the council liaison in that particular circumstance. So I would recommend that that be stressed as that goes forward. And, and I believe it's reflected in this document.
Got it.
I think a requirement of that kind of training to occur every year should be something that would be helpful, not only to the new people that come on board that particular year, but it could also serve as a refresher for the people that have been serving. So I think that's maybe something we should plan on doing on an annual basis. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Let me see. Counsel Marion's got her hand up again? Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I had a couple of additional questions. If now is the time to go to the document specifically? And if so, I have a couple of clarifying questions to what would be page 18 of the document? The, the rules of procedure document? And it's actually at the very bottom, 5B. I think that's section Ms. Silveira was just referencing a minute ago. I just wanted to ask if we might need to add a little bit of clarity here. It says the council liaison brings the agreed upon solution to counsel for action within a timely manner. And I wonder if we might need to be more specific than that. My idea of a timely manner might be different than, you know, Counselor Sullivan's, different than Counselor Weatherly's. Is there some standard we should be adhering to when we say timely? And then in general, I have a little bit of a concern about the statement that's immediately following that about other council members who are aware of situations bringing the issue to the attention of council. While I don't disagree, I just wonder if we should put a little caveat in there that really ultimately it's the, the duty of the, the council liaison for that committee or board or commission to do that. And so I wonder before another council member, before we start doing that to each other's council or each other's committees, if we should put something in here about some sort of duty to consult with the council liaison for that committee before doing so. And that's really my only comment there.
All right. So that is a really good lead in. So I'm going to go to my 7.5 and it'll echo a lot of your concerns here. So looking at page 18, 5B, council liaison is responsible for resolving any issues with a committee member in consultation with the committee chair. Now, this may, I don't know, this may be us having to define what an issue is. And one of the recommendations that I put forward is that let me see. Make sure exactly where I've got it written down. Council liaison working with the mayor and city attorney is responsible for determining whether an issue with a committee member warrants disciplinary consideration by the city council. Because the way it's written right now, any issue that's brought forward has to come to council for, you know, review on the solution. I believe there are incidents out there. Let's say a committee member complains against, you know, about another committee member. The liaison comes forward to myself and the attorney and we're like, no, this really isn't a violation. You know, you as the liaison should be able to get with the chairperson, talk to whoever and work it out. And it not necessarily have to come to council every single time. Especially, we're talking committee members that are citizen volunteers. And if it's coming to council, that means their name is going to be put out here on video. And I don't think a minor infraction. I mean, if it's just a, they messed up. You know, they, they, I don't think it should have to be publicized in a city council meeting every time. So I'm thinking step one, it goes to the council member, it goes to the liaison, the liaison gets with myself and the attorney. And we decide whether or not we, but on guidance from the attorney, whether it actually needs to to be advanced. And then if it does, then the liaison gets with the chairperson, thumbs up, tries to come up with an agreed solution. Once they do, then they bring it forward to council. That would be my first recommendation. Second, I don't see in here, and maybe it's in a different part of the rules of procedure. What happens if the issue is with committee members via versus the actual liaison? Is that something that would be handled as a complaint process? Like we do with other, because it's an actual council member? Or because I've had that before. I've had committee members come to me and say, hey, we have all signed this petition. We want, we want a new liaison. And, you know, I'm not real sure what I'm supposed to do in that situation. Does that go as in a formal complaint? Or can that be handled, you know, under this process? You know, I put down here, if it's with the council liaison complaint, the complainant is required to bring the issue to myself and the city attorney. You know?
Mayor, if you look in section 6B, when a problem exists with a council liaison, the committee chair will approach the mayor to discuss issues and resolutions related to the council liaison. The mayor will bring suggested solutions to both.
So I just didn't read down far enough.
Yeah, I think that is addressed, but it's just the next section.
Okay. Okay. See what my other one was. I think my B is, my B is covered. See. A, B. Okay, C is pretty covered. Okay, on that 6B, does it say what I'm supposed to do with it? Mayor will bring suggest. Yeah, okay.
There is.
All right. So then my only other one was the same as Counselor Marion. And that was the definition of a reasonable timeframe.
Yeah. We did discuss that and, and I think Ms. Silveira put forward 30 days. I think, I don't even remember why, but balked, we balked at that and we settled on.
For me, the 30 days was.
Yeah, we settled on a timely manner. And I, I understand the desire for something a little bit more definite. And we can certainly take that under advisement. It just seemed like 30 days was a little bit on the short side. But.
Yeah. Well, and here's the only I, and I don't know how we define this. Let's say we've got a comprehensive master plan committee that's been stood up. They only stand up for so long. Get towards the end, somebody makes a major infraction. But yet it's going to, the committees due to shut down in two weeks.
Right.
You know?
Turn of review might be a better example because they have to meet deadlines for the, what you call the county ballot. So you have to act quickly.
You know, so.
I get it.
You know, you could, even if it's 30 days, if, if the liaison waits 30 days, then that committee is since gone, right? You know? So I don't, what do you do in that situation? So?
But let me ask a question. If if there was a problem with a, a board member and the liaison is trying to solve that problem and the committee only meets once a month, it makes it difficult to see whether the problem has been resolved or not. Because you didn't have a meeting yet to see if it happens again, you know? I mean, so, I mean, maybe 45 days would be a better timeframe. But I, I mean, you got to see whether your discussion with the people that you're talking with have any effect. I don't know. Unless it's a real outright infraction or, you know, if it's a minor thing, you need to let it go, go on and see if it resolves itself. It's a major thing, then the 30 days is a fine process. I don't know.
So what is your thinking, Counsel Marion?
Oh, I actually had my head up for a different topic, but as far as the timing goes, I, I think it's going to depend. You know, to, to points that have been made by, by several of you already, there are some cases where you might need to come to a more swift action. Maybe you need to delineate between temporary committees versus established committees that are, you know, permanent in nature and have a different timeline for the two. Because again, if you're only meeting once a month, I mean, I don't know. It kind of depends. In some cases, there are some commissions that don't meet necessarily even every month. You know, I, I'm not, I'm not really sure. This, it might also be different based on the situation and how much research has to be done and what the infraction itself is. So I don't know. That's my best suggestion is maybe you need to delineate between temporary committees and permanent committees and figure out what that timeline might look like for each.
Mayor, if I may suggest, I'm, I'm reminded of the old congressman who said, it's hard to define pornography, but I know when I see it. And I think that timely manner is good enough for this document.
You know.
Highlighted exactly why we did it the way we did it. Because it varies depending on the circumstance.
I think, you know, you act in a timely manner depending on the circumstance. That may mean you've got 24 hours to get it done and other circumstances, you may have a month to get it done. But I kind of like the language as is and we'll just use the judgment.
Too hard to define. Yeah, so. Oh, one other thing. One, one other thing that Counselor Marion brought up. Any other council members who are aware of the situation should bring the issue to the attention of the council? I mean, is that where we want to start? Again, if it's a, if it's a minor issue.
Liaison first.
It should come, you know, the council member could bring it to myself and, and the attorney. And then we get a hold of the liaison and say, hey, this was brought to us by a council member or another committee member or, you know. I, I hate, I want to start at the council level. You know, that it, I would like to see everything get handled at the lowest level and wait for it comes to council.
And I, I think the only thing that we were trying to cover there was a situation where a council liaison just flat out wasn't bringing any issues. Flagrant issues are happening and they're not raising it to the, to anybody's attention. And another council member somehow, some way becomes aware of the fact. And then it's incumbent upon that other council member to bring it forward. They can't just let it lie. That's all we were trying to cover. And happy to make an adjustment as far as the process is concerned. But do want to leave the comment that other people, other council members who are aware of the situation, it's incumbent upon them to make sure it is brought to light.
Well, I'd put down. Well, I had down in here, if the liaison does not bring a recommendation to council within a reasonable time, the mayor may bring the issue to council.
But what if the mayor's not aware of it? It's another council member that's aware of it. What duty does that other council member have to raise the issue?
So you mean it's never, it's never got even to our level?
Correct, correct. Yeah, that's what we were trying to cover.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
A couple, a quick couple of things. As far as the timely manner thing, I just wanted to say a final thought on that. And I think there's a difference between a timely manner when things are in motion versus a timely manner when nothing at all is being done. Kind of like what Counselor Sullivan just mentioned. So I, I think, I think there's a difference between action versus inaction. And, and what that timeframe might look like then. As far as if you have a council member who, you know, crazy things are happening on their committee all the time and no wheels are turning, the council liaison just flat out refuses to address those. And that's actually, I think, an issue that needs to be addressed with the council member and not with the, not necessarily with the, the committee member, if you get where I'm going with that. That's really an issue with the council member and should be addressed accordingly following those procedures, I think, which are called out somewhere else. Yeah. I don't think that this is necessarily the right place for that. And then I think you said it, what you said a minute ago, Mayor, is what I would agree with. You mentioned that, that if an issue is, if a council liaison doesn't bring something to your attention and another council liaison knows about it, if they bring it to your attention and the city attorney's attention, I think that could replace what's here as far as bringing it to the attention of the council as a whole. Because you kind of hit it right on the head. That would allow you then, and the city attorney perhaps, to contact the council liaison for that committee and say, hey, look, this was brought to our attention. Are you aware of it? If so, let's meet, let's have a conversation. If not, now you are. And then, you know, it can be addressed that way. I don't think that it needs to necessarily come before the entire council in every situation.
Right, so it could say something like if the liaison does not bring a recommendation to council within a reasonable time, the other members may bring the issue to the attention of the council and the mayor.
If I may, I, I've made a note to do that exact thing, to make that adjustment to the, so that it's not a blanket bring it to council, it's a bring it to the mayor and, and to the city attorney for evaluation and for protection. Absolutely. I would make one comment with regard to what Ms. Marion said about it being an issue with the, the council member and not with the committee member. I would disagree in one instance, and that is she mentioned things like the, the committee's not, the wheels aren't turning, they're not doing anything, and that's the problem. I think what we were considering was there's, by committee members, there's violations of Open Meeting Act, the things like that. That is a problem with that committee member and it does need to be raised and it does need to be addressed with that committee member. That'd be a situation where it's not the council liaison. Obviously, it's a problem with them that they're not raising that issue. But that committee member does need to be, and it needs to be addressed with them, the issues that they're having.
Okay, well, I'm good. In a minute, we're, we're right now, it's all council. I'll open it up to citizen comments here in a little bit. All right, so I think I'm good, except for, I just want to add something about, you know, that first thing. If it, if it, if it doesn't rise to the level of, I don't want every solution.
Completely agree. And I would recommend, and I hate to do this, to be honest with you, but I would recommend that we table this one more time, that we will go. It doesn't appear as if there's any issues with the other edits that we've made, that we go ahead and accept all of those, we fix the capitalization problems, we fix the table of contents problems. And then we bring this one issue back rewritten. And it'll be the only thing, if anybody brings anything else other than this up, we shoot them on the spot, we don't allow them to talk. It's not, it just isn't, that isn't going to happen. We'll, we'll talk about this one issue.
You've got a second issue already.
Okay. But you get where I'm coming from.
So this meeting, you can bring up a second issue, it's just not the next.
Now you can, next time you can.
What's, what's your other issue?
All right, go ahead, Counselor Marion.
I have one other point I wanted to raise. So the, the, these rules of procedure, particularly in this section, addresses the council liaison and addresses committee members. But it doesn't address how to handle issues with the chairperson other than when it's removal of a chairperson. But not every situation is going to warrant removal of a chairperson. So I'm wondering if something needs to be added in here that it, maybe it's just as simple as the council liaison is, well, but you see, the council liaison is responsible for resolving any issues with the committee member. You really can't add and the council, the committee chair, because, with the committee chair, because you don't resolve, I mean, you would, of course, try to resolve the issue with the committee chair first, right? But my point being, do we need to put something in here for how we address issues with the council or the, the committee chair when it's not recommended removal?
Right, so here's what I have written that I will send to Counselor Sullivan. I put on here, if the issue is with the committee chair, the liaison and the chair will attempt to come to an agreed upon resolution. In either case, if the liaison and the committee chair cannot agree upon a resolution, liaison is required to bring a recommendation to council.
Mayor, if I may?
So, yes.
What I would suggest, the, the committee chairperson is a committee member, just like all the others. Yes, they have additional duties, but that chairperson is a committee member as well. So I would suggest that the paragraph 6B up above, I'm sorry, 5B, does address a, a chairperson. If there are not issues that revolve around removal, that up above applies to committee chairpersons. It's only down below when you talk about removal of a chairperson that you realize that you've got to do something a little bit differently.
All right, yeah, I can see that.
If I'm looking at the right 5B though, Kevin, the, the solution says that the liaison is supposed to resolve with the committee chair. So if the issue is with the committee chair, who, what's the process in that scenario? So that may need to be clarified.
And we can certainly do that, absolutely.
All right. Anything else, Counselor Marion?
No, Mayor, I, I live to serve another council meeting. I'll make sure that if anything else comes up, I.
Mr. Surick?
Yes, sir.
I will turn it over. Would you like to make some comments at this time?
Yeah, I'm just going to recommend rather than go along with all this common law type thing. Why don't you clarify that? Write it down, whatever everybody's responsibility and what they do under various circumstances. And you all sit down and decide back and back and forth and come up with a certain rules and regulations.
That's what this is. And that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's why I said, I said I wanted to shoot people because this is like the fourth time of filming. And we're tired of bashing it about. But that, you're, we're doing exactly what you're describing.
Okay.
Yeah. It's written, it's a 20, it is 20 plus page document.
I don't like this, let's change.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience have any comments on rules of procedure? Anybody in the online audience have any comments? All right, I will bring it back to council then.
Mayor, I will reluctantly make a motion to table this item for the future agenda.
All right, I have a motion to table and a second by Counselor Dabila. Any further discussion?
Bring it back at the next.
You said future.
Future, the hope is it will be on the 15th.
In a timely manner.
Bring it back.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. There none, motion is tabled until the timely man. Nice.
Gentlemen, I'm going to leave it all in your capable hands.
Good to see you again.
Good night.
Good night.
Take care.
Mr. Mayor, I've been reminded by our monitor that all of our audience must speak into the mics so that they can be heard.
Oh, yeah. I keep saying I was going to carry him the microphone, but I forget. My sergeant of arms needs to be up there. Hand it to the person.
Okay, we got item seven.
All right, I am on what, number seven now, right?
Seven.
All right, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding ordinance number 21-07-01-02 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Lago Vista, Texas pursuant to Vernon's Texas Codes Annotated Local Government Code, Chapter 102, Section 102.007B, providing for amendments to ordinance number 20-09-17-02 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021. Amendments to said budget by department are set forth in Exhibit A attached to this ordinance. All right, let me go over here to my cover sheet, see what has been written in here. This is coming from Public Works or City Engineer. City Council approved a maintenance building project in the CIP at the estimated cost of $36,650. Different quotes received require this project to have funding of $40,000 to cover construction and miscellaneous associated costs. The project is a metal maintenance building at Water Plant 3. Currently, there is adequate storage for maintenance vehicles and equipment to protect them from the elements. Gasoline diesel maintenance equipment cannot be stored in the treatment plant where it is currently stored because of the opened air tritic unit, unit and or near chlorine feed systems. Also, there is a need for space to repair plant components. It is better practice not to perform inside the treatment plant building. Please see the attached exhibit. Staff is proposing transferring $3,350 from the utility reserves to the CIP fund 40-580-8262. Currently, the city has a little over 5.2 million in the utility fund balance reserve account plus accrued interest. So, good thing about this one is the utility fund reserve is in very good standing. So that is not necessarily an issue. And it's been told to me, as, and I'm sure everybody is aware, although it's metal and not wood, the cost of everything has skyrocketed. So the initial estimate is slightly too low. So they're asking for the additional 3350. I do have a question for Mr. Belay, if I may. Eric, you with us?
Yes, sir, incognito.
All right. So you've got a line on here that says gasoline diesel maintenance equipment cannot be stored in the treatment plant. But then you got in parentheses where it is stored. How is that possible?
It's not that it cannot be stored legally, it's highly ill advised to do so. So that's one of the things that we're trying to do is try to properly store equipment where it should be stored and not in, inside where water is being treated.
Okay, so it should probably see maintenance equipment should not be stored in the treatment plant. Okay, got it. Yeah, I know of all the corrosive issues and stuff, so.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else with questions, comments? Yes, Counselor Marion? Oh, I just saw your hand go by.
Yeah, sorry, I was scrolling my screen, looking at my notes, but I'm, I'm, I'm good right now, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else with questions, comments?
No.
No? Wow, anybody in the audience, live audience?
It's getting a little thin out there.
Failed on us, for those of you at home are live audiences down to two. Yeah, anybody on the video, how many questions, comments? All right, I will bring it back to council then.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 21-07-01-02 before the price goes up again.
Who is that? I heard a voice over here first. Okay, so got the motion, we're counsel Weatherly and the second by Counselor Sullivan. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. There none, motion carries unanimous. All right. Number eight. Discussion, consideration and possible action on the contract award for the meter replacement and automated meter infrastructure and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. So one of our buy boards, it's not called the buy board, but it's the same thing as the buy board. City belongs to the Houston-Galveston area council purchasing cooperative, a nonprofit semi-governmental entity. This cooperative performs large bid procurements and receive bid items at much reduced unit cost. The cooperative then via contracts allows smaller cities to participate by performing the bidding and procurement according to the state and federal standards, offering the smaller cities the opportunity to take advantage of the process and lower costs. The city's current water metering system needs more automation and the ability to provide meter reading on demand. Currently, our system uses meters that have a very high failure rate. In the last three years, the city has replaced as many as 160 meters per month. That is very time consuming. Many of them were new meters that were actually replacing old meters. Another disadvantage to the current system is that the city, the city uses. Another disadvantage to the current system is that the city, the city uses is that the meter tends to skip calculating water used for as much as six months before it fails. A recent meter sampling testing showed substantial water loss. A conservative estimate revealed as much as twenty-three million gallons per year. City staff spends much time replacing meters registers and much time is also spent to read the meters. City has approved a CIP project to upgrade our water metering system to be more efficient through automation and more reliable meters. Staff has been coordinating with an H G A C meter contract supplier to replace our system. The H G A C approved vendor is Hydro Pro Solutions. This project will require a personalized contract between the city and Hydro Pro for installation and yearly maintenance. That contract has been attached. Hydro Pro Solutions offered very competitive unit pricing, one million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand and thirteen dollars for the AMI system and over forty-five hundred meters. They also included two hundred and forty-eight thousand plus for the cost of installing those meters. Staff requested a separate quote for installation as an option to reduce overall project costs. There is a yearly licensing and online portal fee of approximately six thousand based on our current meter count. The city budget. The city budgeted one point five million for this project and the actual project cost or one point six million. Funding gap can be transferred from utility reserve account, again with the same balance of five point two million. Staff looked at the option of conducting installation in-house, but several other cities who have gone through this process. Highly recommended against in-house installation to reduce costs. The other option staff considered was partial in-house installation enough to bring the project within budget. Although that is not preferred, staff can continue with that option if council so decides. And then another one will be the budget amendment. This is the award contract. The contract award that we're discussing here, not the actual budget amendment. So, just out of curiosity, Eric. Hundred and sixty meters per month failing. When they fail, what does this mean to the customer?
Okay, so that hundred and sixty meters a month, that was, there was an extreme for several months a few years ago. That number has gone down now. Reason being is we have started slowly replacing those meters with a different brand. So when the meter fails, usually almost six months, it starts under reading substantially. And when a meter fails completely and the city staff notices it, what, what happens is that the city issues a bill comparable to the previous month's bill. For at least for the month when the meter does fail.
I just wanted to confirm because I just wanted to confirm because I had heard that from other sources that.
So they don't get free bar.
That it starts reading low, thus the result of the twenty-three, as much as twenty-three million gallons per year not being accounted for. I just want to confirm that. And let me ask another question. I understand that the meters we're currently using are not even being made anymore. Is that correct?
There's multiple stories, Mayor. One thing is for sure is that they have stopped responding.
I'm sorry, the company has stopped responding?
Yes, sir. So we've, we've started using a different company to replace those meters.
And these are, these, this new system, these are the, this is gonna provide the meters where people can go online and see their water use directly online, just like they can their electric meter, right?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. There's gonna be an online portal. What this system does is he reads the meter every fifteen minutes, so. The customer can get online and then look at up to fifteen minute accuracy instead of what currently happens is if there's a leak, we catch it a month later. And when the customer gets the bill, it's two to three months down the road.
How, how long will it take to install all these meters?
Really depends on the option we choose. So if it's just the contractor, it's probably gonna take about ninety days from start to finish. If we start using in-house staff, it could be delayed possibly to one hundred twenty to even one hundred eighty days, so six months.
Good.
How many bids did we receive on this?
So, Mayor, the way this works is you, you, when you find this type of procurement, there's typically one bid that you get from the procurement, H G A C or buy board. In turn, those, those entities bid this out and they can get multiple bids, but what you get is the winning bidder.
Okay, well, that's the way I understood it, but just the way this is ready, written, you know. The way it was written. It, it just, it just sounded to me like there was, you had seen others.
Right, so one of the things we, I personally have experience over at the city just west of us in, in Marble Falls. They use a different brand. So this brand is probably one of the top three that we'd consider the best brands out there and has the most history and most accurate. One of the things that we did notice at the last city I was at is they did do the bidding in-house. They did it separately. They didn't go through buy board or H G A C or Shoreswell or all these other cooperatives. And then there and looking at some of their prices four years ago, those prices were actually higher per unit than what we're getting through this purchasing company. So it was a no-brainer to us.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan? I had a few questions. Well, first one was, why did the other cities recommend against doing in-house installation, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Belay?
They, they pointed to a lot of breakdown in communication between, between the meter supplier and in-house staff, and a lot of it was the adequacy of having enough in-house staff trained. So you have, so let's say typically we may have two to three people that are fully trained to do this kind of work. However, to do it in-house, we'd need ten to fifteen people to do this to accomplish this on a timely manner. Whereas if the company comes and does it, they have their specialized crews that are very well trained. Instead of us having to train our people for a certain amount of time and go through the trial and error process. So that was one of the things, the city of Horseshoe Bay whom we visited, they said that we still have about five hundred meters that we haven't replaced it. And, and they said that the process started two years ago, so that kind of scared us a little bit.
Oh, okay, good. The second question I had was, I think this is the case, but I want to confirm. We've had that issue in the past where we did our winter averaging, and we advertised that it was November, January, and February, but we're really taking readings in late October and into, you know, early March, for example. Getting these new meters, they will resolve that problem. When we say that we're averaging in November, January, and February, we truly will be averaging just those months. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, I do want to clarify one point. When finance says that they are doing winter averaging, what happens is that they still do winter averaging in November. November, January, and February, but then winter averaging doesn't actually occur until early spring. So on this one, what's gonna happen is that winter averaging will occur almost instantaneously during the, during those, that three-month period.
But we won't have any issue of readings being taken early, you know, before November starts, for example. That won't happen anymore.
No, sir, that is correct. So this readings, they, like I said, they take readings every fifteen minutes, so you are correct.
Okay, and then my last question is, in the contract, it talked about the pricing could increase after the end of the year. I, I had another clause that said, or after execution is, is finished. I'm assuming that if we take the choice to get these units from this company and they install them, that will be guaranteed this price that's in the contract, even if their installation extends beyond the end of the year. Is that an accurate statement?
That is an accurate statement. The pricing will change if next year we decide to buy more meters for them. They will sell those to us at market rate. So, one of the things I do want to mention that probably was not included in the summary is that this is a unit price contract. So the number that you see there is our best estimate, a very, very conservative number, so we are very confident that we'll be able to bring this well under budget. If there's an increase, obviously we'll come back to council, but we don't believe that there's, that's the case for, for this project. Also, do you want to mention that the contractor, the representative of the contractor, he is, he is available if we need to, if we need to talk to him.
Okay, that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Marion?
Thank you, Mayor. I had actually just a couple of quick questions here. So the, with the shortage of, of materials in general that are happening, you know, kind of across the country. Are we pretty sure that these, or is there any concern, I guess I should say, about getting these meters in or the availability of the materials to do this job on the current projected timeline and within the current projected budget? Or is there some concern that either or both of those things could become an issue if materials are not readily available? Like, is the contractor really confident that this number of meters is available at this time to do this job?
Mayor, good question. We're fairly confident the contractor has all the materials and ready to move forward as soon as the contract is executed. There is in the contract some stipulation about acts of God and things that neither the city nor the contractor can control. So if something does happen, like back, was it two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, there was, was some issues with shipment coming in from China. We had that issue back with the previous meter manufacturer, so there wasn't much we could do about that. But Greg is, Greg is available, and Greg, please, if you would, just make some comments on that.
Thank you, Eric. My name is Greg Burrows. I'm the Executive Vice President for Hydro Pro Solutions. Mr. Mayor, Council, the product is available. Like Councilman Marion said, everything comes unavailable. It seems that a drop of a hat. Right now, if you guys were to approve, we would probably start installation around the middle of August. So we would work with your staff on their reading dates that they read their meters currently and begin installing meters then. So we're just a little over six weeks out on being able to provide product as well as mobilization.
All right. And you've got all five thousand in a warehouse, ready to go.
They're, they're not in my warehouse, but they can be in my warehouse very quickly, sir.
All right. Anybody else? Questions for? Yes, sir.
My, so I was glad to hear, Mr. Belay, that you, your, your one point six oh two million is big enough that, you know, if, if the number of meters grows a little bit, you, you feel like you've got it covered, so we won't have to come back and approve another three thousand dollar increment or something on that. That was, that was good. Most of my questions relate to sort of the timing of the work, and we, and we just heard from, from the gentleman from Hydro Pro that they could start mid-August. I'm, I'm a little concerned. This is a big bang for the city, so we got five thousand meters all, all happening, all changing at the same time. And this, there's no way that, you know, the, the city goes around and reads all those meters basically on the same day every month, right? And there's no way they can all be changed in that day, so somehow there's gonna have to be a reading as a meter gets removed, and I want to make sure that, you know, between Hydro Pro and the city, that's all coordinated. And there's obviously a billing transition that's gonna have to happen. It's sort of, my concern is, and this I think really is primarily back to you, Mr. Belay, that there's a, there's a, there's a massive program management effort that's gonna have, have to happen on this in order to pull it off cleanly and effectively. I just, you know, want to make sure that, that you've thought through all of that, because last I checked, you're a pretty busy guy, so hopefully folks off your staff are gonna be able to handle this and make it, make it run, run smoothly. And so you may or may not have any specifics on that, but that's just my concern. The one specific thing I would ask is, what's the approximate timeframe? I don't see anything in the contract that says, you know, it must start within X days and must complete within Y days. Is there anything in the contract, or should we have something in the contract that say, says, you know, if it's gonna start in mid-August, it must complete by, you know, fifteen days after that or forty-five days after that? I don't know what's reasonable. Can you, can you give us a sense of that?
Without going in detail through the contract, I believe there's in the scope of work, it may be specified as a ninety-day installation, if I'm not mistaken. On, on the coordination, that's truly, that's where, just like every project that we deal with, there's issues. A lot of times, the citizens never really, really realize that there were issues. But then that's what we're hoping on this one, that the citizens will never realize that there was, well, there were issues that had to be overcome. But see, yes, there will be a massive coordination between city staff, meter readers, the contractors, contractor meter readers, and contractor installers. Our utility billing, including our IT, will be heavily involved, and also our in-code software providers will be heavily involved also. So it's gonna be fairly intense for about ninety days. So typically, when these guys are going to replace meter, they take, they have a laptop with them. They take the old reading of the old meter and they put the new meter in, in the system and. So that the, when, when the billing occurs, they add the old consumption to the billing for every individual meter. So typically, the current meter reading takes, it can take up to four to five days, but usually if there's any issues, usually within three days, we can, we read the meter. So ideally, that kind of, that system installation happens between this meter reading periods. So Greg, if you wanted to add anything to that, please feel free.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Prince, when we do the installation of the meters, we'll do it completely ditch release, so we'll download your information from your billing software currently. So we'll take the last reading off of the old register, the old meter. We'll take digital pictures to verify that read for both staff as well as, as utility customers. We'll take digital pictures of before and after on the meter box and the landscaping to show that the, the landscaping was not disturbed. All of this is done again digitally so that that information can be uploaded back into the city's billing software. You're exactly right. This is a big, not only construction project, but it's also a big IT project. We do our best to keep all of that in the field so that our contractors are doing it at the time of the installation and not adding added effort on your staff back in City Hall trying to get that information back in.
Thank you. That sounds really good. If I may, just follow up. This size of job with, I think, what we're looking at says forty-four hundred seventy-seven meters, is that something you would expect your team to do in two weeks or two months? What's, what's roughly the order of magnitude here?
No, so we're, we're probably gonna be pushing that ninety-days timeframe. One of the hardest things for our guys to do, which you, your staff has done a fantastic job taking care of your system, one of the hardest things for us to do is to find the meters. Like physically find the meter box in the yard. Your staff has done a, a, a good job at, at providing us some data as well as providing us some, some personnel when we need it to go out and kind of do some audits and that sort of stuff. On a typical day, a two-man crew should be able to do seventy-five to eighty meters a day. We kind of have a ninety-day caveat in there. There are gonna be times that we're gonna pull our, our crews out so that your meter readers can go and read. So there's gonna be a couple of days every month that we're not gonna be working. When we do the meter, or when we do the installation, we'll hang door hangers on citizens' doors to notify them. That'd be a door hanger that, that I will work with Eric as well as people there at, at City Hall. It's gonna be kind of a dual branded door hanger. So the city of Lago Vista as well as Hydro Pro Solutions. We'll also flush, uh, faucets or hose bibs if they are on the street side of the resident. So we're not going to go into anybody's backyard. We're not going to cross a fence. But we are going to flush hose bibs that are accessible on the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Council Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have actually a few questions. These are probably for, um, for Mr. Belay, but, um, the first one is do we have any of these meters in Lago Vista now? Um, and if so, um, you know, is there anything that can be shared about them? Another question I have is will there be any sort of negative impact on city staffing? Like, will this in any way result in any city staff, um, losing hours or being riffed or anything like that if, if the time to read meters is substantially decreased? And the third question I have is, do, does the installation of these new meters in any way, or do we expect the, the installation of these new meters in any way to impact citizen water bills? I fully recognize, of course, water bills are based on usage, but I'm just wondering, do we anticipate that these meters may result in any sort of, um, like increase in, um, I guess, or improvement in reading the, the usage so that it could impact, um, folks' water bills? Is anything like that possible?
Mayor, very good questions. Uh, we do have several of these meters in the ground. And if you, council recalls that, uh, we had issues with a previous meter provider and we've been, uh, we switched to a new provider, which is Master Meter and Greg and Hydro Pro Solution are a vendor of Master Meter. So that's, uh, this meter that we've been installing on the new homes for, uh, for a little bit of time now. And, uh, we're very pleased to say other than one meter, which was damaged by, or I'll say two meters damaged by a contractor. One was filled with concrete, the other one was the concrete truck run over it. Other than that, we haven't had any issues out of these meters. And so some of the cities around us are, are, are basically saying exactly the same thing. So we're very pleased with the performance of the meters so far on the, on the accuracy of the meter. So some residents, not all, but some residents who may have a meter that is a little bit older or meter that it's kind of starting to fail, um, when they do, uh, when they do get the new billing, they're going to get an actual bill. So some residents may see and, uh, may see a little bit higher bill, uh, just based on the accuracy that these new meters will read. And maybe a little bit of a shock to the residents, say, hey, last month my bill was $120 and all of a sudden it jumped to $140. And I haven't really used much, any more water than I did last month. So that's what may happen on some, uh, some of the residents on, uh, but the rest of the residents should not see any difference on the, their utility bill. On, uh, on the meter readers and the time, uh, we will shuffle staff around unless obviously this will save us a considerable amount of time on our meter reading. So instead of asking for new employees, it's a lot easier to shovel, shuffle people around and, uh, just wait in for another year or two before we come for council and say we need more people. So that's, uh, unless council says, you know, now that you reduced, uh, reduced time, then you got to reduce staff. Hopefully it won't come to that.
Anybody else? Counsel? All right, I'll open it up to the audience. Anybody in the live audience? Yes.
Um, so what I'm understanding is that there's a software component of this.
Yes.
And so what, I guess my curiosity is, um, will that same company that installs the meters then continue to be paid like on an annual basis for their software? And then the question stemming from that is will, will they be the only ones to be able to provide that software? Will the city be tied to having to use them? Or can they bid that and use other companies to provide the software services? Because it feels like it would kind of be holding a barrel over the city's head if they are the only ones that can provide the software. They can pretty much choose whatever cost they want to charge the city in the future, I would think. So that's my only question.
All right.
Thank you.
Let me see here. I think it was around 8,000 a year.
It was six.
Six thousand.
Oh, so.
6,000.
The yearly licensing and online portal fee, $6,000 based on our current meter. But along with what she followed up with that, so yes, there is an annual thing. So Eric, what? And that's what I was about to ask.
Mayor, very, very good question. Um, just like when you use Word and Excel and PowerPoint, there are alternatives out there that we can use. Is it desirable to use those alternatives? Probably not. But if, if the, if the meter manufacturer decides that, hey, we're going to jack the prices up from $6,000 to $600,000, then obviously then those other options are definitely a lot more viable. So there are options, but just like when you buy a vehicle, um, I mean, you, you want to use some of the manufacturer's warrant, warranty parts instead of going for aftermarket parts. So at $6,000, that is a steal and we're going to stick with it unless things change.
Got you. All right, thank you. All right, uh, so that's everybody in my live audience. Mr. Voe.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. I, uh, and I guess, um, okay. What happens because, you know, so many, some of the buildings out here have horrible pipes. And, um, even when they turn off the city water and then they turn it back on, my condo units, we have horrible problems for weeks and months after. And, um, so I'm just wondering how these new, because they're going to shut the water off, because I actually know someone that used to do this, they're going to cut the water off, cut the pipe, put the new filter system in. But I'm wondering with our bad cell service and internet systems out here, if this is ran by a Bluetooth mechanism, when the city is coming down the street to read the meters, are, are they going to be able to bump that along on their devices? Because we've got some pretty spotty places in this town that you have no service still to this day in 2021. So that's one of my questions. And then, uh, and then about the PSI for the, for the pipes, because, um, you know, it, right now we're getting all our water through mine, I believe is already the smart thing. I have never seen anyone behind my condo reading my meter ever. So I've never seen anyone pull into our parking lot, ever. I've never seen anyone, and this is seven years, walk by my back door, ever. Matter of fact, I had a leak and I came to the city asking because it was right at the meter. Come on, nobody saw that? It was going like that for three months. And because I don't use the exterior of my condo out there, I never noticed it. And I thought, and they go, oh, no one's reading your meter, you're automatic. So I, I know we've already had this in place. And so I'm wondering what's the good to the bad? I know, you know, it's going to be quicker, better, faster, more, you know, um, up-to-date system, because these systems have been around the United States for years. I mean, I, I'm from California and we've had this system going in California for probably over 25 years. This, the same exact system. Nobody even walks it, every, they just, it, it reads it and it sends it to them. So, um, that's one of the things, you know, I mean, this, this, um, sorry, I'm trying to think of my word. This technology, thank you, this technology is so good. At some point, it should be able to read these meters and send it to a central hub without anyone even going out to read the meters. You know, so I'm, when Eric's saying people won't lose their job, someone's going to lose a job. Whoever's meter reading right now, he's going to lose his job. And I don't know as a citizen, if we've got something in place saying, yes, we're going to update stuff, but we want to make sure that we're not getting rid of people that maybe have been here 14, 15 years during a job. And now 14, 15 years later, we say, sorry, technology has pushed you away. So that would be my only concern. Thank you.
So Darcy, the, the meters that we have had since our last replacement are all wireless. That's why you don't see anybody. They're wireless. But the only difference is it did not go to the, the hub where citizens could actually look at it. That'll be one of the improvements that you will be able to see. Plus, uh, these are new meters that are a bit much more accurate. That's an advantage of going to these meters. As far as your staff goes, uh, we don't have anybody that is, I, I don't believe that we have anybody that their sole job is a meter reader. I could be wrong there, but, um, I, I think it's a member of public works that, you know, does other things besides just read meters. I don't think that's what they do every day, day in, day out. So, um, I mean, I could be wrong, but I, I just don't think that, you know, it's going to completely wipe out somebody's job. You know, whenever meters are to be done, to be read, you know, that person goes and does it. But I don't think, I, I could be mistaken, but I don't think they do that all day, every day.
Mr. Belay just said it a while ago, uh, the meter reading is done once a month and it's a three to four day process. That person's only tied up three to four days. That's not paying their salary. They're doing other things. So the likelihood of this taking somebody and putting them on the street is extremely, extremely low. There may be different duties that they'll have to go to. They may find their job changing, but I don't believe they're going to find themselves without a job.
All right, anyone else? All right, that is everybody. I'll bring you back to council then.
Mayor?
And it's open for action. We're talking about, this is just the contract award.
Right. Well, Mayor, I'd make a motion that we, um, uh, provide you the authorization to sign this contract with Hydro Pro.
All right.
What about the transfer of the money?
Nope. All right, so I have the motion and a second by Councilor Dabila. Any further questions?
Yes, sir. I, I would want to ensure that the contract does have a, a period that defines when it needs to be done by. I didn't see it in there. We had a discussion of 90 days, but I, I would, uh, would ask that we make sure that that is in the contract, that it's, uh, there's a performance duration.
All right, is that just specifically 90 days?
Well, I, I, and I'll, I'll come back to Mr. Belay and, and Greg, I'm sorry I didn't get your last name, but, but, you know, it sounded like 90 days, maybe pushing it. I want to make sure that whatever we put in the contract is something that you can achieve, but I don't want it to be, just be open-ended where it goes on and on.
I, I do agree with you. I couldn't find, uh, anywhere in the contract where it said a specific duration.
From the, the Hydro Pro side, I can work with Eric tomorrow. I think 90 days is a, is a, is a doable timeline, but we may put 120 days just to make both Lago Vista as well as myself kind of feel comfortable. Um, we don't, um, you guys don't pay us until they're installed. So it's more beneficial to my company and to my contractors to get the meters installed as quickly as possible. There's no benefit to drag it out.
Yeah. So, uh, Greg, we, we're trying to approve this tonight. If, if we, um, modify the motion to, to say that the contract duration would be 120 days, would you be comfortable with that?
Yes, sir. I would, I would sign off on that contract with, uh, with Mr. The Mayor.
All right, so 120 days from the time they start.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah, 120 days from the day you start.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I would amend my motion to include that caveat that we have the contract include, uh, that they would finish the job within 120 days of starting the project.
Second again. All right, so I have the amended motion and a second. Councilor Dabila, any further discussion? It's Council Marion. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hear none, the contract is awarded unanimous. And now we go to number nine. Discussion, consideration, possible action regarding ordinance number 21-07-01-03 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lago Vista, Texas pursuant to Vernon's Texas Code annotated Local Government Code, Chapter 102, Section 102 dot 007B, providing for amendments to ordinance number 20-09-17-02 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021. Amendments to said budget by department are set forth in Exhibit A attached to this ordinance. Does anybody need me to actually read anything?
No.
No. Yeah, I, I think everybody knows this goes with the exact contract.
Yes.
The amount, transfer of $102,471 and 50 cents from utility fund. Questions?
No.
Council Marion.
Mayor, the, the, the comment that I would have, we didn't explicitly say it in the, the motion we just made. This budget amendment, I think, would tie it down, but I inferred from our previous discussion that we were authorizing that, that, that Hydro Pro would do all the install. There would be no installation by city employees. I don't think we explicitly said that, but I, I believe that was the intent of our, of our previous motion.
That is absolutely intent. If we need to go back and revisit that, we can certainly do that.
Could you recommend that?
It's on the record that the intent was clear that it included that. And so that will be reflected in the minutes of this meeting.
Correct. And then, then the budget amount here matches that, so that's perfect.
Any other questions, comments? All right, anybody in my live audience? No. Anybody online? All right, I'll bring you back to council.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance number 21-07-01-03.
Second. All right, I have the motion and a second by Councilor Williams. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Aye.
Hear none? Motion carries unanimous. And we go into consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have the approval of the May 6, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, I have the motion and a second. Councilor Sullivan? Any further discussion? Or is there a discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hear none, consent agenda is approved, unanimous. And discussion item, discussion and update regarding capital improvement projects. Eric? It's all you.
Thank you, Mayor. So for tonight, I had about seven different items that I had laid out for council to discuss some of the things that had come up recently and some of the items that, uh, Councilmember Prince had brought forth as a concern. So those items are on, uh, on the executive summary of the agenda. So one of the things we'll start with, uh, we'll start with the street rehab program. So city staff did go out there and reevaluate the streets. And we saw a lot of the streets that we looked at were previously slated to receive the thinner coat, a different type of payment called micro-surface or slurry seal. Some of the streets were, were looking in a lot worse shape than they did about a year or two ago. So those, uh, those streets are based on, based on some of the criterias that we used when, uh, to, uh, rank them. So those streets were upgraded to a much higher price, uh, which would be basically overlay, but the different types. but the different types of different thicknesses of overlay. So overall, if you bear with me for a second. So overall, originally we had, originally we had about thirty-two streets do micro-surfacing on, but based on the evaluation we did recently, seventeen of those were upgraded to an overlay type. And similarly, we had about thirty-nine streets for fogs to be sealed, be slated, scheduled to be overlapped, scheduled to be done this year, but only about five of those were upgraded to an over, to an overlay. And one of them is actually from last year. And that one, because we had a utility line project nearby, was delayed. And that is Peseta de Vaca, so that is another one of those streets that, as a result of our, of our analysis, was changed to a different type of pavement. So overall, we, we are looking at about thirty-three streets at a little bit over one point eight three million dollars to rehab. Hopefully by early December or by the, close to the end of the fiscal year. I'm sorry, the end of the calendar year. So these are the thirty-three streets, and that's shown on the list there of the agenda item. They're all split up into different sections of different pavement types that were originally slated to be done. So the rest of the streets are, that are not included in this list, they require a lot of pre-rehab type of work. And so therefore, it's not something that we can do this year as a matter of timing, also as a matter of cost. So one of the things that was interesting, that was definitely not planned this way, is that we have, we have, I'm sorry, we have about one point eight three million dollars in budgeted or leftover from our current budget base and compared to some of the projects or accounting for some of the projects that were already issued. These streets are estimated to be about almost one point nine million dollars, a little bit higher than what we have budgeted or what we have left in the budget. However, one of the things that we can do is we can include some of these streets as bid options. And if the street comes in higher than what we have budgeted, then we can push those streets for the following year. However, we think that our estimates are a little bit on the conservative side. So there's a very good probability that all of the streets will come in, the bids will come in at, at the budget that we have remaining. Any questions on the street list? We don't, go ahead.
So Loman Ford obviously is not on this list. Is there anything else that's not on this list that was done during, already done or is about to be done? We should be aware of. I mean, this is a grand total of thirty-three. Loman would make it thirty-four.
We have done, we have done about five or six smaller streets in-house since October. I think we've done two this year and the remaining were done last year. We have two more in-house streets to be, are scheduled to be done before August. But as far as paving, those are the only streets that were done, but none of those were contract for, so they're all done in-house.
Any other question I have for you, Eric? Do you have a sense? You said thirty-three, these thirty-three you believe can be done by the end of the calendar year. Do you have a sense of how many of those will be done by the end of fiscal year?
Probably the first half, I would say the, at minimum, the first thirteen streets. But probably the first half can be definitely done by the end of September, is very likely. Remaining, so and one of the things that we have done is we have, we have instructed the current contractor that is doing drainage work, and he is, he is doing those, that drainage work in a certain pattern to where we're going to give the, our paving contractor the same type of instruction on the contract where they will follow their pattern where the drainage contractor may be working on a different part of town while our paving contractor is already following behind it.
That's great. Actually, I'm sorry, I do have one more question, and this is just sort of a sanity check question. I know we've had the discussion of whether prevents roadwork at certain times of year. Are you making any sacrifices on good engineering judgment? Or do you have any engineering concerns on doing these thirty-three streets by the end of the calendar year?
One of the things that we do not want to do is, we don't want to get too far into December with paving work. So that is ill-advised. Once the weather gets cold and you start having a lot of issues. Cold weather requires a lot of staff, staff oversight, something that we don't have the luxury of time. So we're going to try our very best to move that forward. I know in September, October, there's going to be quite a few rainy days, so that's probably going to, there's going to be a gap there. But hopefully I answered your question. I'm not sure if I did.
No, that's good. And obviously, I personally assume council would prefer that we, you know, if we miss the mark of thirty-three by the end of the calendar year because we have some weather events, not spend money on fixing streets. It's a bad choice. So if you can hit thirty-three, that's great. But if you have to come back and say, well, I only did it with twenty-seven because of in my view, would be very
Mr. Blay, can you give us a sense of how much coverage these thirty-three are in terms of miles? Just roughly.
I am sorry, I do not have that handy. A lot of times we deal in square yards, so I did, and I forget that people want to know in mileage and when you're fit, I do want to apologize. So we'll, we'll, we'll get that. And before it comes to council as a contract, I'll make sure to have that answer ready.
Not a really significant question, but in years past, we've just discussed what the total mileage is of streets in Old Lago happen to be. And I just wanted to get a sense of what percentage is being covered annually.
Yeah, good question, but would this one answer exactly your question? But overall, we have about five hundred and fifty streets, about a hundred and seventy miles worth of roadway. So this is thirty-three streets out of five hundred and fifty. That doesn't give you a good sense, but one of the things, there are some streets that are long, long, there's there's Bison there is a fairly long street. There's Country Club. There's the, that one's a fairly, fairly street all the way from Thunderburg to almost national as it goes around. So there's some streets that are fairly long, some of them are a lot smaller streets. One of the things that we did do is we calculated that streets that require less than a hundred tons of asphalt, doesn't really tell you how many. Those streets we can probably do in-house, and that's the way we have it set up, that smaller codes and smaller segments of streets that we have the capability of doing those in-house with the smaller pieces of equipment that we have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Alright. Water system? Eric, I'm going to go to number two. Did we lose him?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was talking to myself over here. I apologize. So on the water system balance project, what that project does, and I'm not sure if I can share my screen. I don't know if Dave is on, if that's even a possibility, you know, with the current setup or not. What'd you say, Aaron? Sorry.
He's on. Let me see if either he can do it or I can't.
That's okay. Oh, there. Well, look at that. There we go. Hopefully everyone can see my screen. So the water system balance project is, if you can look at this map, it's just coming backwards. So there's two pressure planes to where currently water doesn't, is very constricted between the area on Bogeford with the area around the lake on the southern portion of the city. So what the water system balance, what this project does is install some larger piping and it installs some, what we call altitude valves to control the movement of flow of water from one side to the other. So currently it's fairly constricted. We noticed that when doing water outages or if somebody opens up a fire hydrant, that, that tends to cause some issues. So that doesn't resolve, we do have another problem, that doesn't resolve moving water from the south side of town to the north side of town, but it does, it does help us get a step closer to that. So that project is currently under design. It's, we was, there was a survey, we did hire an engineer. So that is under schematic design at this time. The next project was, so the water system balance project, what we have done is we've included that project with another project, which is Sludge Pond at Plant Three. So what then, similar to the other one, this project is currently under design. We have a schematic design going on and we are trying to find the best option and the best way to minimize costs. So that's where we are on that, on those two projects at this time. We don't foresee actually starting construction before September on this one. As we probably will be, well, we probably won't finish the design until August at the earliest. Any questions on those two? Okay, I will move forward to the next project. We'll see which is
I do have a question. So on, on the balance project, I know we've had this discussion of upgrading WTP one versus WTP three for more, more output. Does the balance project make an assumption as to where that increase in water, water capability will be, or is it, is the balance project sort of independent of that decision?
It's semi-independent of that. It does help, it does help that decision-making, but it's semi-independent of that. It does, what this does is basically resolves an issue that we have on the south side of town. It doesn't, it helps us a little bit in moving, does, moving water from one plant to the other. But the, one of the main reasons is to move water between these different pressure plates. So there is on, on, on the plant expansion and the feasibility study that we're currently doing, one of the things that we are considering is adding some options to increase water, increase water movement from one side of town to the other one. This project does help that a lot, but it relies too much on the existing water plant to make that, to make that happen. So we want something that is a little bit more independent than that. I'm not sure if I did answer your question or not.
Yeah, that's fine. Go on.
So moving on on the generator project, so for generator project, we did receive a grant from FEMA, and we are working through that. We're in the design phase of that. We're close to finishing the design. And you'll see the, just one of the pages from the design on the project. So what we're, we're putting a generator for water plant three, and we're also taking into account so water plant three expansion in the future and moving that away. This generator, however, will not, is not going to be big enough to accommodate future water plant expansion. It's big enough to accommodate the current usage, but not for the future. So if in the future the city decides to expand this water plant and we have to put a bigger generator, there's definitely other places that we can use that generator. Any questions on that one?
What's the fuel type?
That one is diesel.
Question that I have is, do we have an, Eric, do we have an overall plan for emergency power? I mean, we certainly had all kinds of power issues. Where, this is talking about power specifically for water plant three. Where else do we have exposure in the city? Have you already done that analysis? Are there some, especially as we look into next year's budget cycle, I'm interested in knowing, you know, where, where are our risk points and where do we potentially need to invest in power? And if you don't have the answer today, I understand that, but I guess tell me what you can. And then I would encourage, as we go into budget cycle, we have a deeper discussion.
So one of the things, we do not have a master plan on generators, but we do know where the needs are. A lot of the things is we don't need generators everywhere, but we do need generators at critical points. For example, we don't need generators immediately at both water plants, but at least one water plant needs to have generator. The downside is that even if you have the generator at the water plant, there's, we have several pump stations around town that are not supplied by a generator. Unfortunately, when power goes out, somehow in this city, power goes out to the entire city. So that, that's just unfortunate. And it's usually not feasible to all at once upgrade each one of these locations with a generator and then portable backup. A lot of the cities, what they do is they convert critical stations to a quick connect. The problem is, like as I mentioned earlier, is if power goes down, we don't, even if we had quick connects for forty different stations, it would be impossible to get forty generators online. So, so I think what the best thing to do is just take a step approach and just do the, the big items right now, which is the water plant and the water intake, and start doing those. And then we move, move farther down to those critical points where the pump stations are.
So on the generator, why diesel and not propane?
Propane is much more, propane generator is much more expensive, and we only got a certain amount of money that was given to us from FEMA. I believe it was a seventy, thirty grand or eighty, twenty grand. I don't remember. So that was, that was one of the things. And also diesel is fairly, fairly available. The, one of the issues is we did find with diesel that the cold weather diesel tends to become, turn into gelato pretty much. But that can be overcome with some heat tape and that, that can be resolved. So we know better at this time than we did last time.
Alright. Thank you. And Councilman Marion, with this screen here, I cannot see my screen at all. So if you've got any comments, you're just going to have to yell at us.
I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Alright. Oh, now you're back. Okay. Four?
I didn't realize I was off camera. I must have hit the wrong button. Sorry.
So the fourth item that we had on the list is sewer system master plan. What I included on the packet is basically a cover page for the water system master plan that we currently have. So on the sewer system master plan, what the city has done so far is we have gone out and we've used some staff to survey our sewer valves and then try to modify our GIS to be a lot more accurate than it is otherwise. What we end up having is garbage in, garbage out. So we've also working with a surveyor to survey all of our wastewater manholes, which is something that's going to be needed for the wastewater master plan. And we're also looking with, working with some engineers that we currently have a contract with to see if there's an interest in modifying existing contracts or adding scope of work to the existing contracts to bring them on board to make this project happen. Some of them have indicated there's a lot going on that they have gone, that they probably won't be able to tackle this anytime soon. One con, one engineer, which is Walker Partners, that the city has a very good history with, they've indicated there'll be, they would be very interested in doing this project. And possibly towards the end of the month, we may come to council for, for a contract extension with Walker Partners, says their five-year contract has, or he's expiring or has expired, and include this project as part of their contract. So any questions on that one?
Would that be funded within the existing funding for the wastewater master plan that's already in budget? Or that would need additional funding?
We don't foresee then needing additional funding, however, if the project will be going into next year. So the current funds will not be spent. And so the city staff will ask for this unspent amount of funding to be budgeted for the next fiscal year. And so the city staff will ask for this unspent amount of funding to be budgeted for the next fiscal year.
All right. Number five, meter replacement? We've beat that one to death already.
Yep. I will not go through the meter replacement. So, so we'll go number, number six, water and sewer plant feasibility study. So currently using department budget, we are undertaking two feasibility studies. One is done by HDR, the other one is going to be done by, is being done by Walker Partners on water and sewer expansion plans respectively. The feasibility study for the water plant's expansion is nearly complete. We've got a draft done. The city staff has some comments and we, we, we're meeting, we have in a web meeting with them next week. And we hope to have a final version by the middle of July for the, for the feasibility study for the sewer plants. On the other hand, Walker Partners is about fifty, fifty percent complete. They have a very, very rough draft completed. And we're hoping that by the end of July, we can have a final version of that. We're pushing them really hard because we're, that's a couple of the things that are holding up our CIP plans. So we're, we're just, we're trying to get that done as quickly as possible. Any questions on, on those two feasibility studies? I did not, I do want to apologize. I did not describe what they are. So the feasibility study for the sewer plant and the water plant respectively is basically looking at our current population projections and trying to figure out what expansion we need, when, where, and how much is going to be. And so, so it's a little bit different for the water plant that the component that we have added is that we're analyzing both plants and we're looking at pros and cons of both plants. There's some good things about expanding one plant. There's some bad things about it. And similarly to the other plant, one of the issues that we're having is that one of the plants needs maintenance. If we upgrade the other plant, we have to do some major maintenance to the existing plant if we don't expand it. So that's some of the things that we're taking into account. And we were, we were, city staff was fairly shocked at the price tag and at the draft when they came in. So we're trying to fine tune that and see if we can give, we can bring the council a price tag that we feel comfortable with and it's realistic.
Yes, please.
Either way, council, you are going to be shocked. So I do want to go really quickly on the monthly reports. Let's see if I can share my screen again. So, so one council, and I believe these reports are being posted online. So typically what you'll see on the front page will be a capital improvement project, which we obviously, we try to update that every month and try to keep that as accurately as possible. So that kind of shows where the project is along the line. It shows what the initial budget was, what the final contractual budget is. Beyond that, what you'll see is, I'll just put in one page and there are several pages of this. You'll see our work order system, the city in the last year has implemented a public order system where our city staff follows where the work is being scheduled. And we, we know ahead of time what we're doing and what we're going to be doing. And we rank those, some of these work orders based on the order of importance. And as they get done, as they get complete, we get the chance to show council, this is what we've done for the last month. And you can, you can, you can kind of try to follow that. And what you'll also see on the monthly report is, this is just one page.
Flip those?
So what you see other than, so these are the water and water meters and the sewer, the sewer taps that we're the city is putting in. And one of the things that you will see here at the bottom is you'll see how many taps we have in, in the backlog, what our average day to complete is. And so that just kind of gives you that information. And if somebody does ask you, hey, where's my house? I asked for a tap three months ago, but you'll come over here and you look at it and you end up being, it's actually three weeks that it's been in the book. So you can, you can look at that as some of the citizens that may call you on some of these things. Or somebody may call you, hey, I had a sewer, sewer clog at this property. I want to know what happened to that. You could come over here and just kind of find that, you can find the work order and then they'll show, they'll show whether it was complete or whether that's on hold or, or, or if it's in progress. Any questions on that?
Well, you didn't include in here, what's my favorite part of your monthly report? And that is the water usage report. So we can, we can track the amount of water that's going out in peak days. I, I find that to be very helpful as part of the monthly
You are correct. And council does have that. You can see that the water usage is picking up substantially. And we're fairly surprised that the sewer is not following. Now, we're still kind of scratching our heads on that, why sewer is not picking up as much as, as the water usage, but that's good news.
It's because it's going on the ground.
Yeah, irrigation. Yeah.
It's going, it's going in my, it's going in my garden. All right. Any questions, comments from council? All right, audience, did y'all have any? Mr. Bell? No? All right.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah, thank you, Eric.
And I'm so used to having this agenda item that's no longer on here. It is not. I will call this meeting adjourned at nine forty-four PM.
Lord, help us.